Good afternoon, welcome everyone. Appreciate you being here. Today, our work session is on public safety sales tax, Marcus Keller. And I guess your crew doesn't look huge, Marcus.
Well, I introduce myself, Marcus Keller with crews and associates. It is just me today. My other colleagues actually down at the Utah Treasurers Association Conference. It's public treasures, so mostly just for cities down in St. George. But I appreciate you having me here today and happy to, excited to talk to you a little bit about this new sales tax that's come up here in Utah. And at least, at the very least, something the county should be aware of. So let me make sure I get this right. There we go. So our team works with Iron County, who as you may or may not have known, has had a lot of jail issues over the years. And a few years ago, they were trying to finance their jail. So this, just a little bit of history of how we've gotten to this point. They tried a general obligation bond that failed. They tried truth and taxation that had a referendum. So basically it failed to do a lease revenue bond. And so basically we'd gone through all the options we felt of doing this. And finally, we went to the legislature because the public had said, hey, we're okay with you financing a jail, but we want people that visit Iron County to also pay for it. We don't want this just to be a property tax. So they were looking at an excise tax, a sales tax in this case. So we went to the legislature and talked to the right people. And with a little bit of luck, we're able to get this masked fixed guideway sales tax, which had all historically already existed, just nobody used except for Utah County. And we were able to get it amended and updated with additional language that allows counties of the third to the sixth class to enact a new sales tax over the entire county. This wouldn't just be unincorporated. This would be every part of the county, including the municipalities or Morgan City. So an additional sales tax up to 0.30% to pay for public safety. Public safety is not defined in code and we'll get to that here in a minute. But so this is under House Bill 488, the transportation funding modifications. If you ever wanted to look that into more detail. But it gives authority to the county. So the county commissioners or in the county council in this case to be able to vote or adopt a resolution calling for the action to basically implement this new sales tax levy. So let's go into a little bit more detail and please stop me if you have any questions because I know this is going to be a lot of information. And I've said this a lot, but I know this is new to you guys. So I apologize if I overlook or kind of go through something a little bit too quick here. So this is going to be in Utah code 59-12-2216. So a lot of times we refer to this as the 2216 sales tax. So it does allow you to enact it after January 1st, 2024. You do qualify being a third through the sixth class county. And you also qualify because you do not have one of the other levies enacted, which is funny because Summit County has that levy enacted. They had actually explored this option, but they were disqualified because it's an either or type levy. And I have it in here, but I believe it's referred to as the mass additional transit levy. But to give you a little bit of background on this, so this is 0.30%, but it is exempt on grocery food sales. So one thing, we thought that was important to have in there because we knew this was going to affect people. Obviously it is a sales tax, but we didn't want it to unduly affect maybe the lower income portion of that county in particular with Iron. So we thought to make grocery sales exempt would help offset some of the impact to people that live and maybe on a more lower income within the county boundaries. But everything else would be eligible. Again, you do qualify and it is for public safety. I will say some counties have gotten creative with what public safety entails. For Iron County, they were doing it to build a new jail and we'll show you some numbers on that here soon. Others have done it for fire stations. But I think overall, I would say in Morgan County, I was just saying this a little unique. This is a very good financing mechanism to help rebuild a very large asset like a jail. Because I'm not sure if you're aware, a lot of the counties facing these rebuilds, Juab County, Iron County. There's a few others we've talked to as well. I mean, a one pod jail is between 70 and 80 million dollars. Iron County's jail, they're still pricing it. They're currently building it, but change orders and everything. They're doing a two pod with the ability to put on a third and they're leaving a portion of the second pod incomplete. It's over 120 million. So these are big assets. And so this is one of the few mechanisms available in the state of Utah to allow you to finance a jail and not have to use property tax.
Is their jail attached to their county building?
It's not attached to their county building, but they are including their sheriff's offices in it now as well.
So could this be used for like a new county building? If your jail is attached to it?
I would say if perhaps the jail is attached and you can claim it under public safety. I've heard people say like, yeah, we're having to build this road and we're using it because it's a public safety. For I honestly think you probably have a wide berth as far as what you would claim as public safety. But there's going to, I'll give you some examples of what we've seen done in the state. I truly believe this should be probably a fund that you look at for capital projects and not something, in my opinion, please, this is just my opinion, not something that just subsidizes your O and M. Because again, this is again, one of the few mechanisms you'll ever have to, can specifically be used for some of these harder to finance, harder, large capital project items. And so, you know, even if you enact it today and start setting money away into a capital fund project or something, I think that's probably a good source of these funds. Because as you guys know, I mean, you were shocked by the price tag on these jails. It's not just jails, fire stations, EMS, everything under the sun is now doubled in price. And that's exactly what happened when they bid this jail out at Iron County in 2017. Originally, it was a 40, 50 million dollar project. And it's just huge increases.
So a question I have for you.
Yes, sir.
On this. It's for all public safety. It can be used for all public safety if we have not enacted the 2212. So that means if we wanted to build any kind of a, I mean, a public safety building and house some of our other stuff above that, we can do that without even having a jail, correct?
Correct, yep. I mean, the guideline is from the state is the money has to be used for public safety. They don't specify capital project. They don't specify paying for a bond. They don't specify O and M expenses. Just as long as you can point to where this is helping or benefiting public safety, I think you would be safe.
Can it be for like a total, like the courthouse and the public safety?
I think courthouse would qualify under public safety. I would just say, you know, depending on what projects you're looking at, it's always good. Once we get into the weeds to probably bring in bond counsel or the lawyers just to opine on it. But they've been pretty flexible so far. So I would imagine anything related to law enforcement would qualify and that would include the warrants as well.
Sorry, I'm new. What is O and M?
Sorry, operation and maintenance. So basically your standard salaries and everything else, things that I feel like should be done through truth and taxation and other things, just so that you don't end up using this to offset O and M. And then in 10 years from now, you're like, oh my gosh, we have a huge project, but we have no source of revenue to draw on because we've decided to use all that sales tax to do things that we probably should have been doing through other sources of revenue. So just be aware, that's how I feel about it. Some counties, for instance, like Daggett County enacted this and they're only getting $80,000, $100,000 a year. That makes sense they would use O and M, right? Because it's such a small amount, it's just going to help. It's a Band-Aid to them. But for you guys, we'll show you some of the numbers. Yours is going to be considerably larger. Those are all great questions. I appreciate that. Disqualifiers, so yep, as mentioned here, it's actually the 2214. The, I believe, the mass additional transit or MA. So that's the one Summit County has. So that's why they can't enact the mass transit fixed guideway tax. So you guys do not have the mass transit tax. So you are eligible and also being a third through the sixth class county. So you check the boxes if you want to look at using this financing.
So in the future, if transit came about, can those money be used for that or not?
No. So if you wanted to, because Box Elder County actually ran into this. If you wanted to enact the additional mass transit tax in the future, you would have to basically repeal the mass fixed guideway for your public safety and then enact the additional mass transit tax.
Have to worry for a few years.
Yeah. So I think most people that have the additional mass transit tax, it's because of UTA. I believe it's part of that program.
So this is considered the fifth quarter as they call it?
And it doesn't matter how long you save it for?
Nope, nope. You would just be, you know, it's not like impact fees. There's no deadlines on it. There's nothing like that. So there may be some fund balance restrictions. That's why I said it's probably be good to put it into a capital fund versus your general fund. So you can kind of get it separated out and not run afoul of any, you know, max limitations from the auditor within your general fund. And then that way too, you can kind of earmark it for future capital projects. This just shows you, if you ever look at the state's sales tax website, this is a little bit condensed version to make it legible here. But this shows you the current sales taxes that you have enacted within the county and within Morgan City. And so you'll see the highlighted sales, that's where that 0.30% would go in if adopted by the county. And then you can see beside that, that MA, that's the one that would disqualify you if you had that. So currently you're at 6.7% unincorporated and then at 6.95% within the city limits. Show you this one. So at the top, you'll see Morgan County, if you were to adopt the 2216 sales tax, your unincorporated tax rate could go up to 7%. And then comparing you to other counties, unincorporated tax rates across the state, either that have the mass additional mass transit or KMA or the mass fixed guideway, you can kind of see how you could stack up with some of your peers across the state. So you're kind of, I'd say kind of maybe right in the middle of the pack there, just depending on where it's at. Here's some of the, probably the most important part, some of the numbers. How much is this going to generate for us? So this is information that we worked with the state of Utah and they have access to a few more different sales tax points than we do. But that number in the bottom right-hand corner would be the projected amount of revenue. So basically the way to read this chart is to say, had we enacted this for 2024, our county would have generated an additional $717,376 of sales tax revenue for the county. So that's, that's the number that we use with some of our other analysis here. But you know, the hope is that is, you know, counties continue to grow, such as yourself, kind of a county that's going to have more rooftops, more commercial over time, that that number, you know, would continue to grow with it as people are spending more money here within Morgan County. Some public safety ideas, so this might answer some of your questions too. Some of the stuff we've seen, sheriff jail, kind of the front and center there. Emergency medical services, fire departments. Revenues could be used for O and M cost for those services. Again, it has to be directed. You can't say, well, we're going to, we're going to subsidize such and such a salary, the assessor's office salary, right? That wouldn't qualify. But if you said, we're going to subsidize something that is related to public safety, then you could absolutely look at doing that. Again, my personal preference is that you look at using this for capital projects just because it is a mechanism that could potentially be bonded against and used for that source. And also too, to help you offset future large capital expenditures. And then you'll see at the bottom there, that can be done in the form of a sales tax bond. So I won't go into much detail on this unless you'd like to. But typically when you're issuing a sales tax bond, you have something for coverage ratio. So that means if you had a $100,000 debt service, you would have to show that you're generating $150,000 of revenues to cover that. So we call that a 1.5 times debt service coverage. So just so you know, if you ever did issue bonds against the sales tax pledge, most likely you would also pledge your local sales tax and your county option. So you would say, we're going to issue this bond, but we want it to match up exactly with how much we're going to generate as far as that $717,000 goes. So those other sources of revenue would be as collateral or backstop, just in case it ever came in under that. And we'll show you some examples based off. And I just preface that, just as we show you some amortization schedules, what would that look like if you were to pledge that towards a capital project? So this chart's a little bit small, but you can see if roughly you had a bond, just giving some of our our estimates on what a county's rating would be and different things along those lines. But if you wanted to have a max annual payment of approximately $700,000 and you wanted to look at a 20-year, 30-year and a 40-year bond, then under that line that says project proceeds, you would generate today's market, or when we ran this about a week or so ago, approximately between $9 million to $12 million. So I like to have that slide. Again, we're not encouraging you to bond, but it always helps, I think, to know, hey, if we ever did need to do a project, how much could this help us out with? Oh, between nine and 12 million. That, that always kind of in my mind helps put you into perspective of, you know, oh, maybe that could pay for, for this public safety. We do that, that. So just gives you a little bit of an idea of what that would look like in the form of a warrant. Some disclosure language so you don't sue us and some blurry contact information. I do appreciate it. I've been talking to Kate about this. She was nice enough to invite us out. We've helped quite a few communities look at this, go through this process. And then potentially some like Sevier County, they've adopted it. They're just currently using it to offset some of their EMS expenses and then putting some of it away into a capital fund for future use. Other people have pledged bonds against it, like Iron County. They were able to issue about $90 million of sales tax bonds with theirs. Theirs was about $4 million of annual additional revenues based off their tax. Juab County is looking at a combination of both. So you know, there's, there's no right or wrong answer for this. Same thing, there's no right or wrong answer if you feel like you need to implement it. I think it's just what's best for Morgan County and is there a need, right? Is there something that you're keeping you up at night like, oh my gosh, are we ever going to afford this? This could be a good solution to at least start planning and saving up money so you can bring cash to the table and not just have to figure out how to issue a deal.
So I have a question then.
Yes, sir.
So it can be used for like new ambulances or fire trucks? But it can't be used for employment, employees?
No, it can be used for, yep. So if you, but, but like I said, I, I feel like that's a little bit of a slippery slope when you start using it for employees and stuff. Because then basically what you're doing is you're pledging it towards that. And I won't say you're kicking the can down the road, but nine times out of 10, a lot of people will do anything they can to avoid truth and taxation. And that's kind of the hard pill to swallow just because Utah doesn't allow you to have any inflation factor with future property values, right? Basically just lower your levy year over year over year. And so you, you kind of, gosh, this, this would be a pretty thing, then we could avoid truth and taxation. I would strongly suggest trying to keep this for capital projects, keeping your O and M more towards a truth and taxation aspect. My opinion, the only, to repeat, the only reason I think that's a good idea is because you're going to get caught with a big capital project. And if you have all this money going to subsidize or pay for O and M for places that you didn't want to do truth and taxation, you're just going to be in the same boat where now you have to do truth and taxation.
Can you go back to your revenue forecast sheet?
Yeah.
You've got local auctions taxable sales of 258 million. We don't collect 258 million dollars.
That's the taxable sales, not the taxable tax sales.
That's what I needed to know.
Yeah, he, he actually had to request from the state tax commission through me that they'd give him that data.
2.5 million is what we collect is what this is indicating.
Right, right. I was just trying to figure out.
Jeremy, can you click back to the sales tax update?
Slide 10.
Slide 10. Keep going. Keep going. Wrong way. Keep going. Keep going. There you go. Well, one more forward. Thank you.
It's harder than it looks. I'm struggling up here too. But yeah, so sorry, yep. To interpret this graph, this is just how many taxable sales are done within your county limits or that you would qualify for. And then you take those numbers through the fund states matrix here and then multiply that by that 0.30% or one-third of 1% roughly. And that's where you get the revenue that would be produced off just that levy. That's a great question. Any other questions? I know this is a lot to throw at you and it's, you know, it's definitely something I would say it's good to know. I think it's worth consideration, especially if you feel like there's some moving things that are going to be difficult to finance or pay for in the future for capital projects. So that's kind of my suggestion as you think through it.
As we look at all of these numbers, we will end up having, I mean, Box Elder, I know they're thinking about putting this in. And so their rate, oh, they have?
Yep. Everyone that was on that list that showed you the different levies of those counties, between the MA and then the other column was the NF or the mass fixed guideway. All of those counties have implemented the tax today.
Because these numbers don't reflect, I pay, I go to those places. That's why it was a question. We're 6.7, we were still one of the smallest or lowest.
Why you look at your receipts that close?
I do. The other day we got, I got charged over here in town at 8.25%.
They just added 10.
That was tax, sales tax. Problem is, is we only get back what the state says we get back. If they go and submit 8.25, it goes into their sales tax revenue for the state.
So the commission requested this topic. Is there a specific thing that you were thinking of using this for as a mechanism?
I would like it to help fund a new building for like the one in Croydon for fire stations or for, for other kinds of things that were deficient in our county. And I think this is a great way to do it, if we can do it. And then, and then as Matt was saying, is to put it into a reserve until we get the money to be able to do that.
Yeah, one year of that would pay for our new fire truck.
That's right.
Instead of paying on it for the next 10 years and paying debt.
So those are the things I would like to enact with this. And that's one reason I brought it up before too, was that we can do that to take care of some of these things in the future without having to kill the people when it comes time. I don't want to have anybody be hurt because this is everybody that pays it, not just us as residents. And if we can get tourism going the way we want, we'll be bringing in people that we can just collect from.
Do we need a, do we need a satellite fire station in Croydon?
It's on the agenda tonight.
Well, you saw kind of the numbers.
We'll need one eventually in Porterville, Peterson. The problem we have now, and I'll talk about this in our meeting, is that insurance providers are dropping folks because they're too far from a fire station.
Our sheriff got dropped.
There's, there's four major carriers now that won't, that won't provide insurance in Croydon anymore because we're too far from a.
So I think this is something we should consider in the future. One of our meetings, consider enacting that. We need to do it before July 1st, or actually before about June 1st. If we want to have it be starting by September 1st, November 1st, October 1st.
That's actually a great point. Thanks for bringing that up. So just so you know, once you do, so, well, there's a couple of things just on the process if you wanted to adopt it. We fought really hard to make this a decision that can be done by the commission. So it would just be done via either an ordinance or a resolution. Garrett would probably know better as far as the method that you would want to adopt it into. But once it is adopted, there is about a three to four month ramp up period before you start collecting the full amount. So it takes that long for the state to notify the businesses, get all their tax rolls updated and everything else. So you have about a four month delay before you start collecting monthly. There. So just, just be aware on the timeline as far as that goes.
That's the biggest thing is we have to have it in before July 1st to be able to have it enact or start collecting by September 1st.
Well, and I will, this is just kind of food for thought too. But just be aware, the year after we got this approved, there was already a push in the house to get rid of it. So it's one of those things where I, they were going to grandfather the people that were currently using it or give, you know, but it's just they, I don't, politicians would do it.
Why the push? What was the?
Well, funny enough, it was the representative from Iron County. And he thought it would get him in the good graces of some of his constituents to repeal the nasty jail.
So some of these taxes, when you look at sales taxes, it's a fair tax. And I don't want it to be upon the burden of people if we can help it. And so that is a reason for sales tax. And I don't want it to be upon the burden of people if we can help it. And so that is a reason for sales tax. It's for specific reasons. And that's why I personally like sales tax.
I think it's more fair. It's, it's, it's more distributed, especially as your commercial base grows to other people visiting your county paying for this public safety need. Because if you think about it, a lot of the times, at least in, in St. George or Cedar and some of these cities, some of the people that come in are the ones that are having to use the EMS or having to use the ambulance or having to use the sheriff or having to use some of these resources. So it makes sense that they would also cover some burdens associated with it. That's what the excise tax does. If you do a property tax, then that all falls just on your current taxpayers.
There's really no way to, to see, um, local versus outside, right?
As far as.
Separate that.
You mean who's paying it? You mean?
Correct.
Yeah. We can't do that, but we can tell how many visitors we have.
Didn't, didn't Lee's come out and say they were drawing people from you went in?
Oh, yeah. Huntsville. Yeah.
So really, so we, they're saying they're getting more.
You can do like a sales tax leakage study to kind of see where people may be shopping at or buying their, you know, higher purchase prices to where you may be missing out on certain sales tax. But I mean, that's about as close as you're gonna get. So someone saying, oh, you, you should build a groceries. You know what I mean? Or something along those lines.
Be one way you probably could find out though, and, and ideas to go to the car dealer and ask them if they could tell you how many are out of county buyers. Cause that's a good portion of our tax because those are high dollar items.
So this is not a sales tax on groceries. However, with the new restaurant tax, like let's talk about Lee's, they have their hot foods. Is it another sales tax on the hot foods?
It, it would just, it would be exempt of unprepared food.
So. So yes, it would add to the restaurant.
Everything else would be included, including restaurants.
You see right now with the, the sales tax on restaurants. It's going to be for all. Take place January. January next year.
These are all great questions and I, and I don't want to overburden your time. I know I've been given a certain time slot. Obviously you'll, you'll have this information. If you decide that you want to move forward, just let us know. We can help, you know, the county go through that process. And then if there's future projects that you kind of want to run some analysis on, our team would love to help you look at that and say, okay, what, what would a five million dollar fire station look like in today's market with today's interest rates? And we could show you different amortization schedules on how that may look and how much of, of you could pay for just using your tax, that two, two, six. Anyways, I, I really appreciate everyone's time and, uh, again, to be sensitive to the, the council's time, we'll, we'll go ahead and wrap it up here. And please feel free to reach out if you have any questions or concerns.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
So Jeremy needs to reboot to fix that feedback. I had chief come in early in case you wanted to start the conversation on any of his items. We obviously won't be able to action anything in, in work session, but at least you can get the conversation started. But Jeremy, go ahead and come in and reboot.
I believe we can get Mike out of here.
That's also your designated bathroom break.
This is actually timely discussion. Fortunately, I haven't started on my bottle of water. But I'll start right now.
So we can ask Boyd questions.
Sure. You can come up Boyd and we'll, we'll start grilling you since.
So while he's coming up, I'll, I'll note, if you look through the packet on the agenda, there's a lot of fire heavy stuff here.
I know.
Um, and you're probably going to say there's a lot of money being requested to be spent here.
I will say that.
So I just want to be clear, that's, I understand that and, um, there's.
Just money?
There's some reason for that too.
It's just money. It should have been budgeted, but we'll go over that.
Well, I think the only thing that would have been budgeted would be the repair on the truck, but I don't know that we haven't typically budgeted that much for repairs. We do budget for repairs, just not.
This was unforeseen.
Hold it. You don't have any, any day funds.
No, well, sure.
I'm gonna push back. I'm gonna push back on this because, because budget is, I don't know how you do your home budget. But I expect you to do your budget like you do your home budget. Like we save for things and we spend when they come, when they come due.
Well, Matt, they can't save for things because it's part of the general fund. So anything that's left over at the end of the year rolls into the general fund balance.
Which is fine. I'm not saying share, save from year to year.
Gotcha.
I'm saying.
You know, you know, you're gonna have maintenance. And he does have a maintenance budget.
Costs and you'd need to have it in your budget. You don't just keep coming for money all the time.
Yeah. And they do have a maintenance budget. We can talk through that dollar amount stuff and what's.
People in our, that don't seem to budget. They just come and ask for one month.
Oh, me.
Yes, you. You're the worst.
I tease you that you are the most expensive.
You and Brett.
No, you are.
You were just here asking for a big one.
Which one?
The Wasatch Peaks.
Oh, yeah. That's on tonight's agenda as well.
Do you want happy news?
Yeah.
Casey and his wife are having a little boy. They just found out today. One. Yeah.
Can I update you on the Line Creek project?
Sure.
So the Line Creek project is going to start, uh, next week. So, uh, there'll be three hot shot crews in town. Um, so total about sixty firefighters. They will be, uh, buying all their groceries here and then they'll be camping at the top of Deep Creek. Uh, on state property. From there, they're going to be working down from Meek Creek into Line Creek. And doing the mitigation project there. We're going to be spending about a hundred thousand dollars a week up there. But they should be done in a couple of weeks. So expect to see them town. Um, they're a bunch of very good, very good people. Um, most of them are well educated. They're all going to college. So.
How many are there?
There are sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What types of things will be doing up there?
So we're gonna build a, uh, contingent contingency line or fuel break from Line Creek, the top of Deep Creek all the way through Line Creek. So this is going to give us, uh, another access if out, if we have to evacuate people or firefighters out of that area if we get into a wildfire situation. The same thing with Line Creek. We have to evacuate people out of there. They should be able to get out of Deep Creek, just a lot safer. So this has been a several year project. Um, I've done a lot of work on this thing. It took me almost three years just to get this part of it done.
So are you right at the very top deep pick, like right at the top of the landowners? Is that where you?
Right, right. And we were able to, uh, also get grant money to secure a gate between Line Creek and Deep Creek where before it was fenced off. So there's no way to get across. And so that will have a Knox box on it. So it'll be only access for images, emergency access only. And that will be closed.
So who's landed it on?
Uh, several people. Yep.
So are we, so it's basically just an emergency access?
Right.
Okay. And so, and you're, you're what? Building a road or you're putting?
We're using the existing road, but it's just grown in so thick over the years that we're, yeah. We're going thirty feet on each side and we're doing a shaded fuel break. So it really looks nice. But, uh, we'll take eighty percent of the vegetation and we'll chip it. And then we'll leave thirty percent. So it'll give us a nice fuel break. We get people in and out. We can burn off that line. We can also have retardant lines, uh, run along the road to help secure it. So we can do multiple things with it. So, yeah, this has been about a twelve year project up there.
Great to see this coming to fruition.
Yeah. So you'll probably see them around town anyway.
Right. Yeah, Boyd. Sorry. Um, last week we were in a discussion on the wooey.
Houseville forty-eight?
Yeah. So are you familiar with everything in that? Does it meet their specifications for us to help our county? Because that's one of the things we're going to have to discuss.
Right. I think there's some things that they haven't figured out yet, like how much they're going to charge owners for lot assessments. But I think it, it'll work. Once we get the, the bugs worked out of it, I think it'll, it'll work well for us.
For those that weren't in that, can you just give the Reader's Digest version of?
It's, it's basically if, so the state wants to create a map. And the map will have high, high hazard, high hazard, medium and low. If you're in the high, high hazard, then the, the state wants to assess a fee on you. So an assessment fee. So we'll go up and, well, it'll actually be on your, your tax bill. We'll collect it as a county and then keep a portion and then send portions to state. Now, if that person wants to get out of the high, high hazard, then he has, they make an appointment with us. We go up and tell them what they need to do. If they get that mitigated and they can take them out of the high, high hazard, then that, uh, will come off of their tax notice.
Is this for property with structures or just?
It's a, it's a property with structures. Yep. So.
Like up Line Creek, Deep Creek, technically there shouldn't be any permanent structures up.
There should not, no. But this is for homes that are in urban interface area of the counties, of all the counties.
Because our, and they've also, within that law, they've tried to determine which areas are prone to fires. We have not had a lot of fires here in this county, but if somebody decided to start one, it would basically go through our county. Everything on that side, on this side, by way sixty-six would basically be burned up. And so those are the things that they're looking at at the state legislature, that they were trying to mitigate these things, to make sure that we can take care of those without having additional tax.
The state's trying to create a way to make these people mitigate their fuels around their properties. To make it a far safer, easier way when wildland fire goes through. Instead of us spending all this more money with retardant and putting our firefighters in harm's way to try to save a structure that maybe can't even be saved. So they're trying to make a way to make them mitigate their fuels around their property. Right.
So it's something we need to consider. Force it upon us.
Yeah. We do have a lot of wildland urban interface, especially in the mountain green area. So like the Highlands, I do expect that to burn one day. I hope I'm not here when it happens. We're going to lose structures. And I've spent a lot of money up there in mitigation. I bet I've spent four hundred thousand dollars removing fuels up there. You drive through there, you can't even tell. Just so much.
So we have eighteen minutes before five. Is there, what was that item, uh, commissioner back roll that you said was going to take a while for you to get your questions answered?
It's the same as with Matt Scott. I can tell that.
Okay. So the action item one?
It would be.
Pump truck fix?
Yeah. So because there's a couple of items on this that you're asking for and, um, I'm not like Matt said. Not in the budget. So tell me how much of an emergency is that we got to get this fixed?
Well, it's, it's one of our frontline engines. It's also, uh, one of our water tenders. So it, it's probably the, the, the biggest water carrier that we have. So it is definitely critical. Us, we've used it all the time to carry water.
Why didn't you know about it last year when we were doing?
So each year.
Thirty years old, we should know that it has to be taken care of.
Right. We, we take very good care of this apparatus. Each year it gets a pump test on that apparatus and every year for thirty-three years it has passed with no problem. This is the first year that it has not.
Why has that happened?
Without pulling the pump apart, I'm not sure, but it could have got a rock in it. It could have just been finally after thirty-three years, it got tired. But it doesn't, it won't pass. It just won't pump, have the capacity to pass. So there was no way for me to know. For three, thirty-three years, it's passed just fine. Or I wouldn't budget.
And I'm, I'm not saying you should know what's going to happen.
Right.
I'm saying you should budget for a rainy day. That's what I'm saying. You should budget.
Absolutely. A hundred percent. And I should, I should pad that a little bit. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not that, it's not that great of an amount that we shouldn't have a maintenance budget line item for you to maintain the trucks that you have. Cause you keep getting more and more and more and more. And so.
I agree. I, I should have padded it a little bit more.
Well, you do have a maintenance budget line item.
We do.
What's that dollar about?
Twenty thousand.
It's twenty thousand. So why are we asking for more?
It covers everything like fuel costs.
We got a lot of other maintenance, like tires and oil changes and other things have to be done on those, on that equipment.
I know, but why do we, are we asking now? We've got money in the budget. Why are we asking now?
Well, that's what I budget for. I don't have, I've already spent some of that budget. I don't have enough of that budget. I can, I can spend.
In May?
Yeah. I'm not out, no. But I don't have enough to cover this, that budget.
You would budget for the general oil changes, services, tires.
Right.
That you budgeted for.
Right.
So you have that to continue up through the rest of the year. This was just an unexpected.
Right.
And you didn't have like.
And a larger line.
You didn't have a large incident like, oh crap, this just happened.
Right.
Where I think maybe in the future, we need to say, maybe you need another ten to twenty grand budgeted for the, oh crap, the pump just went out. And you may not use it. If you don't, it rolls back into the general fund. At least you budgeted for that.
Well, I think we fixed a water tender truck last year.
Yeah, we fixed a, we fixed an axle in one of the trucks.
Yeah.
Front end.
So that's what I'm saying is we have these things that come up every year.
But, but I'll tell you why he's not historically budgeted that way and why the county has never historic, because up until this year, this is the first year that I've ever sat through a budget session. We haven't gotten through all of the requests and been a million dollars in the hole. And had to go back through and call out a bunch of stuff. You guys have been through that a couple of times, right? We get to it and we're like, oh, we're way over. We gotta go get rid of stuff, right? So the county has historically budgeted very tightly. We, we look at our actuals and we say, well, Bud, Boyd typically spends twenty thousand dollars a year on maintenance. We're not giving him extra, right? Cause we're trying to, to budget as tight as we can. Because we don't have extra to, to spread around. The last couple of years has been better and we could do that now, probably moving forward where we could pad some of these a little better. But historically we haven't done that. I mean, we, up until three years ago, we didn't put a single dime in the budget extra for pay increases after the first of the year. So if somebody came in and, you know, we had to hire somebody new at a higher wage or somebody needed a raise halfway through the year, we had to pull it from the fund balance because there was nothing budgeted to do that with. So historically we have, we have kept a very, very tight budget based on actuals. Could we pad it a little more? Absolutely. I mean, it's going to roll back into the same savings account if we don't use it that we would pull from to do this anyway. But that's why it's been done that way. And, and that's not Boyd's fault. That's not Brett's fault. Have they come in with some requests? Absolutely. But that's been the commission saying, we don't want to budget anything extra. We want to keep it as tight as possible.
If it's in the savings account, is it accruing interest?
Oh, yeah.
Versus if it's in his.
It's accruing interest no matter what. If it's, well, yes and no. Technically no. Because we don't actually collect the money that we're spending today until November of this year. Right? So, so we're, we're living on what's, what's in our savings. Because this is all projected. Our budget's all projected, right? And we projected last year for what we're going to collect the next November. So technically no, but everything that's in our, there's six point three million dollars in our fund balance and that is accruing interest.
So when you get those digital checklists that you sign off on, that's you approving the checks. And then once that's done, Kimberly will then transfer the money into the checking account just to pay those and not extra.
Yeah. And she also has some that she doesn't think she's going to be using right away. And that is in savings that's earned. Right now.
Yeah, the longer term stuff. We've got like three million in a, in a long-term high yield. But to, to your point, we could, when we budget, we could say, look, within fleet, we want to budget an extra line item that's for. we want to budget an extra line item that's for catastrophic repairs. And we could budget that every year, whether we use it or not, it'd just roll over.
Well, it's not just fleet. Last year, we had an emergency repair.
Save him this embarrassment.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's embarrassing. I think it's saying, look, we have a major, we have a major issue and we gotta pull some money from our savings. Yeah, I mean, yeah, our equipment is old and we know that.
Because we have great equipment. We've spent so dang much money.
We're just complaining about it, keeps breaking.
I'm not complaining about the equipment. I'm complaining about people always coming for more money.
Yeah, that's.
And especially certain departments.
I mean, it it makes sense.
So here's the thing, boy, this is what I see from you a lot.
Okay.
This is the best deal on earth. We're getting this best, huge, great deal on this, this, this and this. I need more money. That's what I've heard from you over the last two to three years.
Yes.
We've get this, we've got this opportunity to get this and we we can, it'll only cost this hundred thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars. Or we can get these things and it's gonna help us and it's life or death, or it protects our people, just like your, just like your letter says. You know, it's like, we would, we will be the crap heads if we say no to something that you write on there. This is for the safety of my people, you know? If we don't have it, they could die. You know, that's basically what your letter said.
I don't say that, Matt. I I've never said that. I.
It, that's what your letter said to to us.
Right? But I I don't wanna say, ever say that someone's going to die, because I don't know that.
But that's what your letter basically implied, right?
If that's the how you perceive it then, yes.
Okay, well, I have a feeling if I read it to the public that they would see it the same way. It is basically says, if we don't get these things done, the people that are out on the projects are gonna, their lives could be in peril, basically. So that to me says, hey, if you guys don't approve this, you're, you're not protecting my people. And that's, I don't like that. I, if you're gonna do that, then I want you to have it in your budget. And then you can be the bad guy that says, guys, we can't afford this, because I didn't put it in the budget. You know? And I think you could go through your budget and you could find some of this money for things and not come every time and ask us for it. I believe that. And maybe I, maybe you don't. Maybe you're down to the nitty gritty, but we have given the fire department and EMS and given and given and given and give. People, 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 equipment, 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 equipment. And I know we're growing as a county and I want us to be safe. But you too can't just ask for everything you possibly want or desire. That's, that's just my feeling. I'm only one of five, so.
I I see it slightly differently. I think that every department head we have should be advocating for their department and hard. So I actually think Boyd's doing his job exactly like he should be and coming in and saying, hey, this is what we need, this is what we need. Now, could could that be done better at budget time? Sure. Maybe that's a better conversation to have and and to be fair, I think, and Boyd has worked on this, we need to have a good long-term capital plan for for equipment purchases and such. In fact, that, that sales tax we were just talking about could be a good funding source. We could say, look, we know we're gonna need a new engine in four years. How much are we gonna need to put away to do that? I like that plan a lot better. I mean, six years ago, when I came into this, they were budgeting so tight that when they needed new SCBA's, the breathing apparatuses, they couldn't afford them. They hadn't been buying them for ten years. They were all expiring at the same time. They had to go out and buy, it was ten or fifteen sets.
Twenty.
Cost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and the county didn't have it. You know what they did? They went and got a loan to buy that. To spend a hundred and twenty grand to buy those SCBA's. And it was because they had budgeted so tight that they wouldn't allow to even buy two sets a year. And as soon as, soon as we started looking at that, I said, this is stupid. We need to budget. So we budget twenty thousand dollars or ten thousand. It's twenty thousand dollars every year now, so that we can rotate those SCBA's, so we don't get in that position again. And I think that's the kind of thing that we need to be thinking about and we need to be wise about, if that means.
Because I don't re, I don't, we we haven't done that to them. I, since I've been here, we have.
No, we haven't. And we're playing catch-up, Matt. We've been playing catch-up for a lot of years. We've been playing catch-up with Brett's department too. I mean, you know that, right before you came on, we had our, our twenty-year-old dump truck burn down a building over here. And the very next meeting, we had a dump truck lease on the agenda that was not even supposed to be part of this. And we had commissioners that voted no, because they didn't want to buy new equipment. Right? Because it, and so we were kicking the can down the road and we've done that for years. I'm not saying this commission has, but previous commissions frankly, have kicked the can down the road far too long. They should have been thinking about a replacement for this building years ago. And we should have been putting money away for it. We should have been thinking about fire stations and fire trucks and equipment years ago. We shouldn't have had to take out a loan for the new fire truck. Frankly, we should have had the money set aside. But because they were so tight and everybody was so focused on, we can't do a truth in taxation, because we don't want to increase taxes. They just cut that budget down as thin as they possibly could and then stuff breaks and wears out and gets old. And we're in trouble and we're behind the ball. I, I I'm not saying that we should just spend, 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 right? I I get it. We've actually spent a lot less than we've brought in. It, in the last five years or so, we've added three million dollars to our, our general fund balance. That's just money left over after we've spent everything that we've spent in our budget for the year. So we've actually done really well at putting money away. This commission has. Um, and we've been very cautious about spending it too. Uh, but we're in better financial situation than than we have been in decades from what I can see.
The only thing is, is it would be nice, and I agree, just because we have the money, we seem to spend. This is the problem I'm seeing, is we are frivolously spending money we should not spend. And it's.
Wait a minute, on what? What do you think?
Another time.
No, I want to hear. I want to hear, what do you think that we're frivolously spending money on? Because I disagree.
We will discuss it in another.
No, I want to hear it, Blaine.
We've got, we've got three minutes till we're supposed to start. I do not want to get into that kind of a fight tonight.
No, that's plenty of time to discuss it. I, I, I do not like, because this is, this is the problem, Blaine. This is why the public doesn't trust their government.
That's right.
Because they feel like their government spends frivolously.
That's right.
I don't feel like this county spends frivolously. I think that's, I think that's a gross exaggeration. We don't have the funds to spend.
Do you want me to go on? We will. I'll give you an email.
Like trails and.
We don't have any.
That's frivolous spending, in my opinion.
Well, and seeing that's in your opinion. So all of this.
Hang on, hang on.
Can I say something, Matt?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, I just want to say, I agree with Mike in that I think you have the best interests of your department and of our community. You're looking out for our safety. I also agree with Matt in that maybe we need to increase your budget. As Mike said, as a county, we haven't been good in our capital funding, looking forward to the future for our safety of our county. So, yeah. The budget needs to be looked at and possibly increased due to, due to the archaic ness of some of our equipment.
Thank you, really. Matt, I I will take your comments to heart and budget season next year. I'll try to pad these a little bit to try to mitigate any further issues with my budget. So I appreciate your comments.
No, but well, and you, you know, we've been good about getting.
Totally, a hundred percent.
New equipment? What do we have? Two new fire trucks?
Yeah.
Since we've come.
Yes.
Since we've come on our commission. Two new ambulances, you know, it's, it's not like we haven't been trying.
No.
So it just feels like the, the dollar is.
Very, very supportive, always been supportive. I appreciate that.
Okay. Hey, we have two minutes, potty break.
Look at all the water you've drunk.
That's for me, because I talked. Yeah, I'll just let you go first.
But you've gotta stop saying in public meetings that we spend frivolously. That's a lie. Then I want to see the wood.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Morgan County Commission Meeting tonight, May sixth. Day after Cinco de Mayo. I've asked Brother Von Nickerson, not, not brother, brother, you're my brother. Nickerson, Commissioner Nickerson, to give our opening prayer and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful for this day and for all of our many blessings. We are grateful for the abundant moisture we've received these last couple of days. Pray that it will go a long ways into our, our summer. We are grateful for this beautiful county which we live and pray that we will have thy spirit with us, that we can be forgiving, to work together, to work as a member of our community and serve those who have elected us. We are so grateful for those who go out of their way to protect us and watch over, watch over us. I see to bless them with safety at this time. We're so grateful for all that we have and we ask for these blessings and others that we may be in need of this time in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Nickerson. Um, consent agenda items? Any, anyone have anything that they?
We need to remove, I'm sorry, item four, because it was never submitted.
Okay.
And I'd like to put number three, four and five, basically, off the consent agenda.
And move them to?
But since she's taken off four totally, it's just three and five.
Three and five. Okay.
Okay. I'll look for motion then.
That we accept the consent agenda minus three for one five. While removing four and having three and five moved to the action items.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell. And we have a second, who seconded it?
I did.
And a second by commish, oh my crap.
Blocker.
Blocker, Raylene. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Are there any conflicts of interest declarations tonight? Okay, I would re-declare nine lines. Hopefully, this is last night. Okay, now we're gonna be in our public comment. I'm gonna turn some time over to Kate to read a public comment from emails.
From Ben Hetland. Who states, I'm all for the I eighty-four interchange for trappers. Love it. However, I have one huge main caveat and one secondary. That being exit ninety-two must remain open and a traffic circle would be much better than stoplights at the intersection. Part one, why exit ninety-two should remain open. One, the Highlands and Mountain Green are a high fire risk. See the fire department's permanent burn ban. So it'd be highly prudent to keep exit ninety-two open as a fast escape option in the event of a fast-moving wildfire instead of potentially getting clogged up trying to turn left out of the Highlands and driving to the interchange. Two, Mountain Green wants to get more businesses here, yet closing off that exit will be a huge detriment to new and prospective businesses on Old Highway near the Highlands next to the park, and it'll probably kill Phoenix House Cafe. Three, traffic accidents will happen and having a secondary avenue to get home or to work is not a bad thing. Especially with how isolated Mountain Green already is. People will definitely use the new exit for Snow Basin and other travel. It will cut down on traffic on Old Highway, even with the exit remaining open. And Mountain Green is already, oh, I'm sorry, and Mountain Green is already pretty isolated from getting in and out. So having an extra avenue open would be very beneficial to residents. Four, it benefits those living in both East and West Mountain Green to keep the exit open. The interchange proposal suggests closing exit ninety-two to ensure the interchange, the new interchange gets used. That is flat out ridiculous. Everyone east of the interchange in Mountain Green will use it and the majority of skiers and snowboarders will as well. And those west of the interchange can use, can then use ninety-two, reducing congestion all around. The easiest solution to ensure that it is, that is to put signs in the canyon. Um, and from Morgan stating, Mountain Green, next three exits, followed by Snow Basin, Huntsville, exit ninety-three, or whatever it will be. That will ensure people will take that exit most of the time. Five, why spend the tax money on closing exit ninety-two? Just leave it open and maintain it. Part two, why we should use a roundabout traffic circle instead of a stoplight at the interchange with Old Mountain Road and Trapper's Loop. One, the heaviest traffic in Mountain Green exists for about thirty days a year and over the winter months. In order to keep traffic flowing and not slow travel up for residents, install a traffic circle instead of a stoplight. This will allow residents to enjoy better traffic flow year-round. Two, the other benefit of the traffic circle roundabout is. Two, the other benefit of the traffic circle roundabout is we could then have some great art put in that welcomes people to Mountain Green that reflects the area, like a large bronze moose statue or something. That's a throw to Hoover City. Please let me know what you think and what you recommend for this. Thank you, Ben Hatland, Mountain Green.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. I think, I think we would all agree at least on the closing of the of the on and off ramp in Mountain Green with Mr. Hatland?
H-E-T-L-A-N-D.
Hatland. Mr. Hatland, I think there would, I think the public needs to understand from our point of view is that we, we don't have that say as a county. Unfortunately, or that would not happen. So that would be well-directed to the state officials and UDOT. Hopefully, we're gonna work, we're gonna do everything we can as a commission to, to see that that stays open hopefully.
And the comment period closes in two days on May 8th.
Okay. Thanks, Kate.
Mr. Chair, there may be some residents that are here that want to speak to the agenda items. This would be your time to do that if you'd like to. If not, that's okay.
You just came to see us. Wow, thank you. Okay, then we will go to action item F1.
It would be B3.
I'm sorry.
The cost of living merit policy.
F3 we're going to, did you say?
No, B3, from the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, we're going to the consent agendas first. I didn't know if you were going first or last, okay? B3.
Jeremy, that's page 56. Thank you. So I sent this out.
I only saw, I only saw one, one comment back.
That's all I got as well. That's why I put it in consent.
There was one comment I had on the verbiage that I didn't submit earlier.
Okay.
That is in, under procedures, it'll be on paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Says if the county commission determines that funds are available to give increases to employees, they will then determine a cost of living adjustment rate as well as a rate of increase for employees based on the performance reviews. My suggestion would be rather than saying as well as, maybe say and/or a rate, because there could be a scenario where maybe cost of living adjustments don't happen, but merit increases do.
So I'm in blue of as well as.
It would just say and/or.
Along with that same one, county commission determines that funds are available to give increases to employees, they will, they will then determine if.
I could barely hear if.
And if instead of just a cost of living adjustment rate, that way, that way they're not expecting a cost of living adjustment. The way it states it, they're expecting a cost of living, even if we do or don't have.
We'd add the word if before a cost of living adjustment rate and/or a rate of increase for employees based on the performance reviews shall be allocated.
Right, great.
Okay, and then the one just above that one, if an employee disagrees with their score, they may request that the human resources department review it with their department head and elected official, not just or. Because you've got a slash elected official.
That's because some departments have elected officials and some have departments. Right, like the clerk's office has an elected official whereas planning has a department.
Is if you're, okay, I understand that, but if they disagree with their score, they should be able to go to somebody in combination with human resources or an elected official or department. That's all I'm saying is put in there. Somewhere.
That's what the slash means, one or the other.
So it's human resources with a department head or.
I'm saying we need to add or, or maybe, I mean, they may disagree with it and maybe they can't agree with human resources or the department head. And they want to go to an elected official for that, such as one of us. If they can't do that, then how are they gonna have?
I don't think they should be allowed to do that. I think they should work with their department head and HR.
Can't disagree. Eventually it'll come to the commission, but you can't have one commissioner stepping in because you have to have at least three for a forum and that's why we do the budget meetings.
So, I'm, so this has to do with their, their rating. Correct, okay, so how I read it, and maybe that's not how you read it, is that if, like, let's say I score Josh as a one. And he says, I disagree with that, he can go to HR and say, hey, I disagree with my score. HR and I would review why I gave them that score and make a determination if that score were to change, but you're wanting a secondary.
I want them to be able to come to the commission such as that case, the exact case you're talking about. If they don't agree with you and they don't agree with HR, because HR's gonna just go based upon what you want. And so that way they have the recourse to come to us and say, I don't agree with that evaluation. Will we have a review on it from us?
Here's why I would disagree.
Okay, I don't know.
Josh works with me every day.
Right.
You see him 12 hours a month. Whose score would be more accurate?
But they should be able to have that appeal right.
I'm gonna disagree too, Blaine. I don't work with them every day.
I don't either.
Whereas their department head or the elected official, they're with them five days a week. So they are qualified to give them scores. I'm not.
Well, you know, because this kind of mimics exactly what we do at my job. Is we sit down with our direct supervisor and they go over, I just sat down with my principal and went over it's like 60 different items, you know, ones, twos, threes and fours, kind of the same thing, fives. And, you know, she comes out, observes several times a year, I mean, in and out of the office, whatever. And then when there is something that maybe she's scored a one or a two. It's, it, I think the goal is to not make it a negative, but what is it as us as a county can do to lift that employee up? And I think that's my goal would be is really, we don't want this to be a come down as we're not happy with you, but especially with new employees, they shouldn't be scoring very many fours and fives. They should be, there should be some ones and twos in there because they're learning their job. And what can we do? They need training. What do they need to do to get them up to at least that three? And so I would hope that our employees for the most part would go to their department head or their elected official and say, hey, okay, you scored me a one or two, is there some training? Are there things that I can do so that I can become better at my job? And it, I don't think it should be taken. I would hope that the majority of our employees wouldn't take it as a negative. And to go with what Kate and Raylene were saying is that we don't know their employees. I don't know Josh's employees other than the two seconds I walk in, ask a question and leave. And so, you know, we want them to, you know, that's, and that's my opinion.
So we have them score themselves.
Right.
And then we sit down with them through those and say, I agree, I disagree, this is, yeah, so it's.
And we do the same thing. You do a self-evaluation.
Self-evaluation and then an employee.
And I would assume that typically the employee is harder on themselves than their supervisor. I would say that.
I would agree with that, you know, they normally are.
Yeah.
Because they know themselves.
But it's a good self-reflection and then from that outside person, they can say, okay, how can I improve here? What can I do? And, and maybe that's when they come to the commission and say, hey, we need some additional training. You know, is there money available for training to get our employees to be better employees and things like that? I mean, that's, that's just my two cents.
Oh, and I'd just add one more thing. That is, is that, yeah, I think it should be relationship building to have these processes and I, I worry that if they felt like they could come to the commission and then we become a I think it starts to become where you have a infighting. And so we're, we're an advocate for them and, and then the, the department head's not happy with us and I just don't like the feel of that myself. I think it should be, I think it should be a positive thing. That's my own feeling too, so.
Okay, so then the next one down, the next one from that.
So do we need to vote on how that should?
Well, you guys.
It looks to me like we have a majority that just wants a slash there, right?
Yeah.
That it's okay. Okay, we'll leave it there.
And then the next one is all employees who receive a score of three above are eligible to receive a merit increase. Sorry about the three.
That's what you guys stated, was you thought a three was meeting.
That scoring metric says three is, is on par. So an employee is doing that status quo. They, they do their job. They may not go above and beyond frequently, but they do their job. A two would be they need some work and a one would be they're unsatisfied. So a five is rare, should be rare and a four should be somewhat rare too.
Tina, and I really want to emphasize the ones and twos. I mean, and I don't know the rubrics that they're using. I mean, they do it in their own. If somebody's averaging a one or a two, I mean, I would assume that's a brand-new employee. You know, and again, not to be something that, I don't want people to feel that it's, it's bad to get a one somewhere. It just means you need improvement. We need to give you additional help so that you can become that status quo or that exemplary employee. But I just, I really, in my opinion, a one or a two just means that we need to, we need to help you. And I don't want it to be like, well, we don't dare give a one or a two because that shows that I'm a terrible point. And I, in my opinion, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I want to see ones and twos because that means that we need improvement. And then the next year, hey, look, I went from a one to a three. Look at the great improvement that I've made, you know, the training worked, maybe that training needs help or we need to do different training, things like that. I look at the three as it's just status quo.
Was that the issue you had with the three?
Basically, the issue I had with the three is, is that too high? Is that far? Is, is three, okay, you're doing your job, you're not doing anything extra. Is that what three is? And so I'm saying if, if, if we, I know it's depend on what we have done with that metrics or whatever it is. If they say that they are, if, if it's determined that they are a three, are they at par or a C level? Or are they a two that's at C level trying to improve and is improving? Could be a three or a two and a half. So I'm just, I'm just trying to determine, is that three too high? Is that par? Is that a C level or is that a different level, C minus or?
Okay, I was about to ask, I'm talking C level.
Well, I'm just going, I'm just going based on A, B, C, D, E or F.
No, you could, you could be, you could be a three and be an A student, so to speak, right? Because you're doing your job and you're doing it well.
Right.
A four and a five is an A plus and an A plus plus in my book and that's how it's written in the.
Being a teacher, being a past teacher, I look at it as, okay, A, B, C, D, E or F.
That's not how.
And, and so if that's what you're doing, C means to me, I mean, a three means a C. You're, you're just at.
Well, and that's what it should, in my opinion, I think that's what it should be. Three is, my job description is this and I accomplish my job description. I don't go above and beyond, but I'm not failing anywhere. I'm not lacking.
So that was my question. Is that what we're basing that?
That's how I.
Well, it's, it's based off of that document that was put together previously that they used to, to do the scoring.
And from the notes we took back from the budget meeting.
Yeah, and that's been in place for two years now, that, that scoring metric. And yes, the three is the.
But I just want to get an idea of what it is for, for me. Is if that's par, great.
Did you have any more notes?
Yeah, I have one more item and that's the last paragraph.
Okay.
Okay, it says employees who are not employed before April 1st will receive a prorated merit increase based upon their hire date.
That's what you asked for in the budget.
Okay, employees hired after October 1st will not receive a merit, which I can agree with. Employees hired between April 1st and June 30th will receive 75% of the increase. And employees hired between, this is the last line, these last two lines is what I'm talking about. Employees hired between April 1st and June 30th will receive 75% of the increase. Employees hired between July 1st and September 30th will receive 50% of the increase. Now, if you're hired September 15th, you're gonna receive 50% of the increase.
Correct.
If you're eligible for an increase, if you got a three or above.
If you got a three or above. So I'm just trying to determine where we're coming up with these numbers.
From the notes from the budget meeting. You said anyone after October 1, you didn't want to get, the commission did not want them to get even a proration. And we did not do a proration last year. That was a big-ticket item. This is the proration we came up with. So based off of that October 1 date and then going off fiscal quarter.
I just think it'd be a little bit cumbersome to have, you know, do it by month.
By actual day, yeah, I think the, the windows are probably smarter.
So that's, that's where that came from, was our meeting notes from the budget hearing.
Just. I'm just still concerned about somebody that's hired on September 29th.
You gotta have, you gotta have. You gotta have a date somewhere.
Yeah, I know, I'm just.
What would the date be for you?
I don't. Yeah, September 29th, August probably, but you know, then it's the same thing, August 29th, are they eligible? So, so either way, it's just, I think we can go with it for one year and see how it works.
So to recap, the corrections I have are to the paragraph third from the end. Changing it to state if the county commission determines that funds are available to give increases to employees, they will then determine if a cost of living adjustment rate and/or a rate of increase for employees based on the performance reviews shall be allocated, period. Those are the only changes I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the cost of living and merit increase policy as updated in tonight's meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Newton, second by Commissioner Blocker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on B5 now.
Jeremy, that's page 57 in the packet. This is in reaction to the school district have leasing their baseball grounds, their mounds, baseball facilities, sorry, to a for-profit competitive team, but they were using our mounds. And the commission wanted us to have a rental policy in place, which we could not do in that fast of a turnaround, but obviously wanted to put one in place for future use. So Janet Christopherson, our deputy attorney, created this and Attorney Smith redlined it as well.
So my only question, well, I have basically one question in item number five.
Item number five.
Okay, we did not put in a dollar amount there.
We did not.
We have any idea what we're gonna put in there?
That will be part of our fee schedule.
But we don't have a fee schedule for that, do we?
We're working on a comprehensive fee schedule.
So how is that if they have this?
Because if I set a fee on this document and the cost of mounds increase, I have to resubmit this document instead of the fee schedule for correction.
Because I'm okay with it. I just wanted to know what those.
That, that was why. I, I don't know, we haven't had an instance yet, but it would probably be a proration, proration of the cost of the depreciation of our baseball mounds, which I believe maybe they're $1,200 apiece.
She said in here it was $500.
Not the brand, brand spanking new ones, the ones we currently have, yeah, to replace them.
So if, if that is the case, then so basically these will be used by these, these competitive leagues.
Or if the school chooses to use them.
The school chooses. So is this a?
Yeah, there are mounds. Right now we store them.
Every single field.
Huh?
I thought it was already embedded in.
Nope, we own them.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep. So are you good with the fee schedule being part of the fee schedule? I'm seeing the fee not being listed on here, but rather on the county's fee schedule?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only question I have. And I'm okay. With some understanding.
Okay, I'll look for motion.
Move that we approve B5. Morgan County Recreation Department Equipment Rental Policy.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fackrell, second by Commissioner Newton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're to F. Chief Boyd Kerrigan, thank you.
Kate said that you might, might want to talk about the Wasatch Peaks.
Well, that was in the works. Well, I thought was in the work session.
Hey, uh, we're here asking for a budget adjustment of nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty eight, thirty dollars. Uh, for needed repairs on our frontline engine. This engine's a big part of our fleet. And is used as our reserve engine and water shuttle. Uh, we recently completed a pump test of our nineteen ninety-three pumper truck, formerly engine one twenty-one, now engine one twenty-two. And unfortunately, the pump failed after thirty-three years of service. It will need to be rebuilt along with several ball valves that will be need to be. Replaced. Also, we do have a couple of emergency lighting that is not functioning, functioning right now. Uh, the engine is is currently at Larson App Bradsen Logan, Utah. And uh, the nearby repair facility. It's it's about the only facility that's close by that is capable of doing these repairs. Questions?
Just want to put in the record that this was discussed in part in the work session. If maybe we can cycle back to the work session notes. Katie?
So, question I have for you in addition to what we already discussed. So these repair valves, there's only one company in this whole northern region that can do that?
That's capable of doing, working on an engine this age?
There's very few people that do. It's just not a big market. There's not a shop on every corner that can fix fire truck pumps.
I just thought there'd be somebody that would have knowledge of repairing a pump shaft and impeller set.
He's the most highly qualified sought-after uh, repair facility in the state.
Okay, and like I said to you out in the hall. As far as removing the front bumper extension and install new lighting. Is that something that that has failed? Or is it can can it be continued to be used? I mean, it's not a large amount, but it's enough. Can it be along with replacing the rear rotating beacon lights? I mean, are they not working right now?
Right, they're not working. And it is three hours up and three hours back, so I thought we just will get him fixed once there.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve a budget adjustment. Of nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents to be moved. From the general fund. Um, for the repair and rebuild of the pump and multi-ball valves. Remove the front bumper extension, installing lighting, and remove and replace the rear rotating beacon lights.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Blocker, a second by Commissioner Newton, all in favor? There any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
So this next item, um, you're aware I've been mentioning for several months that. We're seeing it issues with homeowners insurance policies for residents that live in Croydon. I've heard of issues with residents living in Porterville and in Peterson as well that are. An enterprise even that are a distance from the fire station. Morgan County currently has one fire station right here next door in the city. And the insurance companies look at that and measure the distance from this fire station to any residents within the county. Now, if you're in Mountain Green, that's a little different because you have an independent fire district there, and that station covers that district. Um, to my knowledge, there haven't been issues with that. It's probably because residences are close enough to the district, to the station in Mountain Green. But in other parts of the county, we've got a real problem. And we've we've looked at the option of interlocal agreements, so I'll just mention that so everybody's aware. We do have an interlocal agreement. With Summit County, uh, Wasatch Peaks Fire. Mountain Green Fire, Weber. And all of those agreements say that if we have a fire and need their help, they come and help us, and they don't charge us. And if they have a fire and need help, we go help them and don't charge them. Um, but even even though the closest fire station to Croydon is in Hennifer. Because it's not part of our fire district, the insurance companies do not recognize that as as part of it. And. I I can understand that because an agreement could be made or broken. I'll also add that currently the fire station in Hennifer does not house an engine and has been. Basically shuttered. They're using it kind of more as storage than anything, but they they are not operating out of that facility. Now, if there's a fire in Croydon, obviously Summit County would respond because it's close enough to the county line. Um, and. We respond and typically Mountain Green responds as well. And we have great response times. Mentioned, you know, to get from Morgan. To Croydon with a fire truck in under nine minutes is pretty amazing. But nonetheless, the insurance companies are are starting to cancel. We know four major carriers that will no longer cover residents in Croydon. You received, I think, an email from a couple of those residents. Um, we've got a couple of them here that just recently received letters from their insurance carrier saying. This discussion does come at a little bit of a, it's a timely discussion in that we are up for our ISO renewal. That is the. Forget what ISO stands for, insurance.
Insurance Service. Office, Insurance Service Office. Basically, what they do is just. They check fire stations, see if they're how capable they are of responding to structure fires. So that's what they're most concerned with.
So the higher your ISO typically, the higher your insurance, the lower your ISO, the lower your insurance. And everyone within. Morgan County will have, within our district, right, which is the Morgan County Fire District, would have the same ISO rating. So if the ISO rating is able to be adjusted due to having. Additional stations or additional capacity, et cetera, that would actually positively affect everybody in the county, not just those near that particular station. It's so, um, when we start talking about satellite stations. Although it's great for those that live in the direct vicinity, it also could could positively impact. Everybody in the county, all taxpayers, in that it will hopefully. Keep your insurance rates either from rising or potentially lower them. I wouldn't hold my breath because it seems like they never go down, but. But if we can keep them from from rising, that would be great. Um, much of this is is due to the wildfires three states over. Or well, two states over in California recently, and that's why the insurance carriers are starting to really crack down on this. That's why the state enacted that. Well, in part, the recent legislation that we talked about with the wildland urban interface is in part to try to reduce. The opportunity for fires to get out of control within the state and and thus create higher insurance rates for everyone. Or even worse, have insurance companies just completely leave the area. Because we all know without some competition. She also end up in trouble because those insurance companies can essentially charge whatever they want and you'd have no choice, so. With that, we started looking at options, um, starting in Croydon. And and I would like this to potentially be a model. I think we should. Consider doing something similar, probably in the in the Porterville area, or or maybe East Canyon or somewhere in between to get the best. Distance from residences to homes, but. But we've started with the discussion in Croydon, and we'll have some discussion about Peterson here shortly. In doing some research, the county currently owns a piece of property adjacent to the the Croydon Park. There's about one acre there, uh, just over one acre that the county owns. It's not been maintained or used by the county. It's been used by the adjacent landowner, but but we actually own that property and have for. A very, very long time. Um, so there is a location suitable, would not cost us anything to. To purchase the land for it. And this is actually an ideal location in that there is a gas line available there for for heating a station. There's a water. System that could be connected to and power there, so utility costs. Boyd and Commissioner. Say Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Nickerson and Kate and I sat down. Um, with with a builder just to get an idea of cost, obviously, something like this, we'd have to put out to bid. As an RFP and and get, you know, actual cost. But we wanted to understand, you know, is this a million-dollar project or is it a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project? Because I think that's pretty pretty crucial to understand going into it. Um, and and we got some basic bids. We're talking about a very, very basic structure.
Not bids, estimates.
Sorry, estimates, not bids, estimates. Unmanned station, this would be. Essentially, a an insulated building with a small office and a restroom. That's it. But would allow us to. Sorry, the equipment would be, yes, in the bay. But the building, I'm talking the structure itself would be very simple. It would just be two bay doors. We we looked at two different options for building size of forty by forty and a forty by fifty. There's the advantage to going slightly longer is is we believe we could put a wander water tender and then a brush truck in front of that if we went fifty feet. Versus if we were forty, that would probably not quite fit. Um, but the idea would be to place a an engine, one of the engines we currently have, we have a brush engine that could go in there. And and eventually a water tender as well. So that's kind of where we're at. We we got some rough cost estimates. They range anywhere from a hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand, depending on. You know, how much finish would be done. Um, and the size of the structure. My ask would be that we obviously put it out to bid and and do a design build. We would give them the dimensions and. To do a design build. We could have our engineer draw something. I think with as simple of a structure as this is, I'm not sure that it's worth that. I think a design build is a better way to go. The bids we had were for a pole barn type structure, so. Pretty basic, but it would have to be insulated so that the truck doesn't freeze. Now, in terms of manning this facility, we do already have a number of volunteers that that live in the area or work in the area of the cement plant. So there are. People there that that could operate the the equipment and are already trained to do so. I also foresee if there is a a station in that area, some residents may be becoming certified to do so. And I've heard some that have expressed interest in that, so. Boyd, what did I miss?
No, you got that right. The the last structure fire we had. We do have some volunteers that work at the cement plant. And they just grabbed a bunch of fire extinguishers because they heard the call and they went to the residents and did what they could with it. And if we had a piece of apparatus there, just can you imagine what we could do? And also, we can also house some medical gear there and be, because we do have some EMTs that are trained to live there. So just that itself is just would just really be amazing, but. But fiscally, I mean, this is be a really cheap way to get a fire station started in that community. We'd be using exist existing property where I already have. Existing equipment that we already have and volunteers that we already have. We just need a place to house them.
So how many volunteers live there?
So we have currently have two EMTs. Firefighters. We have, uh, three firefighters and two EMTs right now.
Live in Croydon?
Yes. And then the work at the cement plant, we have six.
Six and.
Additional or six?
Six additional, but they're not there all the time, right? The workers.
You scheduled the fire, right? You can have mine.
But the plan is to approach the cement plant and ask them if we could train more of those guys and actually have a day and a night shift. And I think they'd be more than happy with that. It's going to benefit them also, right? Have a fire apparatus and a house right there ni- next to them.
I think it's good. Why, if there are insurance companies that are, why? Like, it's one of the emails I got says that there aren't any, but apparently there are insurance companies that are still covering them.
There are some. I've been told though, because I've talked to some neighbors and the same insurance company I have, others have been canceled by that same company. So. I don't know if it's just a matter of as they do their renewals, they're looking at it and saying, no, we don't want you or what it is, but the the problem is. It's it's. The number of companies that will insure you is becoming pretty narrow. And that also means that they can charge essentially whatever they want. So the cost of insurance is increasing significantly in our community because of that, and it will. Continue to do so if we can't do something to to try to.
I guess what my question is on that is that if they're still going to get insurance, is this something that we can save for? Discussed, or is this something you have to pull the trigger?
That's a good question. I. You could look at it two ways, right? You could say, well, you know, there are some that that I don't know if they've been able to become insured. I know of at least one home that is not insured and they can't get insurance, period. Part of it's because it's an older home and part of it's because of the distance from the from the fire department. So for that particular resident, I would say it's urgent, right? For others, it may not be as urgent. For me personally, it's not urgent. But. I think the longer you wait to do something like that, your costs are going to go up inevitably. You know, construction costs will increase whether we do it now or later. I mean, when we started on the Croydon Bridge Project. And did the first analysis on that, that was a little over a two-million-dollar project. When it went out for bid, it was eight million, and when we got done, it was ten million. So the the time value of money is is important here. And for that, I would say I I think we should move quicker than than slower. We also have equipment that currently we don't have a place to put. We took delivery on that new brush truck, and it's in the garage and it should be. But we have an old brush truck that's now going to have to sit outside, and that's not good for the equipment. So this is also. Could be helpful in giving us a place to put some equipment, which is something we're going to have to figure out if we don't have another another station to put it in, so.
The only other thing I'd like to add is we are, um, pretty much done with our ISO study, but they are at our request, leaving it open for the next six months. Should you make a decision on items two and four, so that it would drop our rating.
In other words, they'll come back and reevaluate it now. Otherwise.
That's the only thing I can think of specific to this that.
I guess my only other question for you, Boyd, is that. If we put an engine and a brush truck up there. Are you going to say that then you lack equipment here?
We're going to lack employees here because of that, or is will it stay the same?
It's all volunteer anyway, and it's unmanned. And and I will note, it's it's not like we're going to have, you know, multiple fires burning some there and some here and all at the same time, we hope, right? But if we did, you would you'd be pulling from the same pool of people, you know, regardless, so. Now, in terms of funding sources, let's talk a little bit about that. We do have a a healthy general fund balance. We also, when we did our. Our budgeting this last year, as you recall, when we got to the end, we did have a a small. Surplus, and we took that small surplus and we put it in the non-departmental fund. So there's currently.
Four hundred and eighty-two, eight ninety.
Four hundred and eighty-two thousand of that that has not been allocated to anything in particular. It's just in the non-departmental fund. And that's after backing out the the.
Two days' date.
Just for these kinds of things or because that's not the total fund?
No, 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 that's that's the the total fund balance is six point three million. That that's in the current budget. We budgeted. There was like three hundred and something extra thousand dollars when we got done. You guys may remember that. We said, what do we do with it? We put it in that. That non-departmental fund. So there is money there that we could use, or we could pull from the fund balance if we wanted it. To me, it's kind of sixes because at the end, if we don't use it out of the current budget, it's going to roll into the fund balance. And if we use it out of the fund balance. I don't know that it matters. The the most expensive proposal or cost estimate that we had here was two hundred and thirty thousand. Dollars for the the full structure. I'm going to estimate that we're going to need another fifty to seventy thousand for. Earthwork and utility connections and a septic system and asphalt and other things like that. So we're probably talking. Three hundred thousand dollars conservatively to to get a station built and in place.
I have a question. Um, great job thinking outside the box and finding a place and well for the safety and wellbeings of our residents. So Mountain Green, we are Mountain Green Fire District, which means. So Mountain Green, we are Mountain Green Fire District, which means I pay two taxes. The county and to the district. So are my taxes gonna increase to pay for this new station?
Are your taxes going to increase for?
For my county, for my county fire.
No, because we're not talking about using any money from, from a tax increase.
Have you thought of doing a district?
Yeah, we've talked about that.
Cause we had to build our own over there.
I, I would love to see a countywide fire district.
It's to do with stuff.
Right. Me and Kate have been talking about that, so.
It's a long-term project. It, right now, Morgan Fire is, is paid through the general fund. So yes, some of your general fund money goes towards the fire department. And that brings up, I guess, a point is there will be some ongoing maintenance costs for this facility. They will be minimal because it's not going to be manned, so it's not like we're gonna have people there constantly. But there, anytime you add any facility or anything, there's, there's ongoing maintenance costs. So I want to be clear about that. There will be a few thousand dollars a year we're gonna have to budget into the future for ongoing maintenance and, and utilities.
And I just want to clarify that, that, that it's not just fire that comes out of general fund, it's fire and EMS. Because we are the only ambulatory service in the county. From Mountain Green does not have ambulatory service. Except for.
So for some of the fire, it may seem like it's double, but for the, the ambulance service, it's, it's for the whole county.
So why would you want to see countywide? And why didn't they go that direction before?
I think the countywide fire district would, would take a lot of the burden off of. Our, but funding now, right? We would create our own, we'd create our own funding. And, right. I really think that even we could lessen the apparatus, the equipment. I think we could have less of a budget, really. Cause in Mountain Green, they're their own district, so they have their own ladder trucks, their own brush trucks, their own engines, their own squads.
Residents of that district paid for it.
Right. So I think we could really scale down that way, right? Cause if we had a countywide district and we had a station in Mountain Green, the current one. One in Peterson, if we, if we were to get to that position and one in Croydon. And we can spread that out, have less firefighters, less equipment and have a better all-around fire department. No more double tax.
So who's, who would push back on that?
Cause we'd be absorbing their station.
Yeah, the fire.
Into the countywide.
So the, the fire chief down there would push back on it?
Probably.
Why would he push back on anything?
I just don't think he wants to lose control.
Basically, it would be cheaper for the residents because now it's absorbed by the entire county, not just Mountain Green itself. Entire county is absorbed.
And the other advantage that I see to a district versus paying out of the general fund is when, we all know when you get your tax bill. What do you look at? You look at the dollar amount at the very bottom, right? Most people don't even look at the line items, but even if you do, and you look at that line item that says Morgan County General Fund, right? And it's 15% or so of your tax bill, you don't know what that goes to, right? And it goes to everything here, but I think if you saw a separate line item for Morgan County Fire District. You'd actually reduce your, your general fund by that budget. And then you'd have a new line item that says Fire District and you might see, oh, I'm only paying $50 a year towards the Fire District. I'd feel pretty good about that, right? Versus when we, and when they do have to do an increase, it's not. Well, I don't know where that money's going because it's part of the general. So that's, that's one advantage to doing it. There are some disadvantages too, you know, the, the control aspect, I mean. To, to be blunt, Mountain Green Fire District has, has doubled their rate year after year and they're maxed out now. And that's a concern because if you do have an independent district, there, there is some concern that those that run that district may. May not care about the voters and maybe more interested in the district and, and. There's pros and cons to that.
And they've run out of room for their equipment and they want to keep their existing equipment. So they're gonna be building another building by their station just to house their equipment. And I think if we were a countywide district, we wouldn't have to spend all the money on an extra facility just to house the equipment. We could just spread it out through the county.
So what we probably need to do is have a work session on, on this item at a later date soon. I don't mean on the current.
You're talking about on a district. Yeah, I mean, that's a conversation for another day and it's, it's a, it's a big undertaking. I mean, it would.
And RFPs have to come to you before they're posted.
RFPs for?
So all we need then is a motion for RFPs on this at this point?
Uh, yes, yes.
You mean on the item?
Oh, for this? Yes, sorry. Yes. This would be for, to go out for, for RFP.
And I would need to know if you want an RFP where our engineer designs being Wasatch Civil and then going out for RFP there, or if you want a design build. That's, that's the only clarification I would need.
I personally think we should do design build. I think it's, it's a small project. We'd end up spending 20 grand to have an engine.
There were some things, as I was going through, kind of what they spec, there was, I had a few issues on Peterson's day. Just make sure that we, I mean, one, a four inch slab for that kind of equipment going now, that is not enough.
Yeah.
Just things like that, as I was going through.
I would just send those things to Kate so she gets them on the RFP.
Yeah. So yes, that's, that's the ask here is that we go out for RFP or, or a station. We would then get those proposals and review them and decide how to proceed.
And that would be for what size, 40 by 50?
Oh, yeah.
I think we should go the 40 by 50. It's not a ton extra money to, to go the length. The cost difference is minimal and while you're doing it, it's a lot cheaper than to add on later. And so, and we might as well be prepared for.
Do you want to decide what fund that's gonna come out of and a budget tonight, or do you want to wait until we get the bids back?
Let's wait until we get the bids, because then we'll know which fund that comes out of.
We can, we can get the total dollar amount.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. So right now, I know there's been no motion, no motion, but I need to get with Vaughn on the details of RFP. Um, you're leaning towards a design build RFP for a 40 by 50.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve. For an RFP to be sent out for a fire station to be located in Croydon, a 40 by 50 fire station to be located in Croydon with the design build.
All second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton, a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Carries? Boyd?
Hose testing equipment? Okay, so this, it does have, does have to do with our ISO rating. So we're here asking for a budget adjustment of 6,690, $52 purchased equipment to perform our annual hose testing. This is something that we did get marked down for on our ISO rating. Uh, this is something that I didn't know about, but apparently we do have to have an annual testing on all our hoses. So, um, I did check into, uh, companies that do it for, for us. For as much hoses that we have, it was $3,500 a year. So I thought it would be best and, uh, if we just bought our own equipment. And so the, I got three different quotes and the cheapest quote was if we kind of mixed and matched from each quote. That's where we came up with the 6,690.52. ISO said if we are able to do one this year and the next two years, then they'll count that for our ISO rating. So potentially again, lowering it.
In three years.
In three years.
They let you certify yourself?
Yes.
Do, yeah. My question, you're probably not gonna like it. Is this something that we need to? Is this something that we can put before the budget at budget time for FY '26, or is this something we need to do this year?
We could, but it'll put us a year behind.
Do you have this in the budget then? The dollar amount?
Sales tax.
So we have no equipment budget either, you're telling me?
We do, but that's been set aside for the equipment we have already. Haven't spent it all.
But what do you, what are you saying? What do you mean?
So.
It's been set aside for, you haven't spent it, so there's still some in there, but you.
Right, so I can spend this and then if we do need something else down the line, I guess we can come back to you.
That's, that's what it's for.
I, I have a question on that. You've got three different bids here. 66, 90, 72, 14. One that was at 6,300. It's a 63, 17.
Got one for.
71, 72, right.
65, 71.
You were 71, 72.
But you said you're gonna take what's cheapest from each one and buy it from there?
Right.
So you're looking at about 6,900?
Six, yeah, 6,690.
It mixes and matches.
I could just say. Take it from your current budget and if you run out, then come to us and ask.
That's where we'll go.
F4, you again, Boyd.
Okay, um, back in March of, uh, March 30th of this year, we, uh. During a work session, we discussed the possibility of entering into an interlocal agreement between Wasatch Peaks Road and Fire District and Morgan County. Uh, to provide fire and EMS service. In exchange, Wasatch Peaks Road and Fire District would provide an interim fire station. And, and need, and the needed EMS fire suppression apparatus to serve not only the fire district. But, uh, other underserved commu- underserved areas of the county. Example would be Peterson Enterprise and Mountain Green. Under this contract, uh, Wasatch Peaks Road and Fire District would fund 90% of the incremental costs and the county would fund 10%. This would include an interim fire station, fire and EMS equipment to include a new ambulance. This agreement would, this agreement pres- presents a unique opportunity to enhance public safety at low cost to the county. While improving response times and ISO ratings. Go ahead with questions.
What does it mean interim, interim building? Does, does that mean a more permanent structure is gonna be coming forward?
Correct.
And then will the contract change at that point?
So this contract is only for a year. So each year we would just relook at it and if it's working great, if we need to add things, then, then, uh. Wasatch Peaks would, uh, open to come in and add things.
Okay, so, but it's only, we're only obligated for a year.
Right. Thing with this is it really helps our residents in Peterson Enterprise. And it also gives us an ambulance in Peterson that is closer to Mountain Green. Instead of 10 minutes for an ambulance to arrive, it'd only be two minutes. So it really enhances our ability to service the, our residents in Mountain Green also.
So on page four, um, paragraph six, the term is three years, but there's a 12-month notice of termination. So maybe that's what you're thinking is that they have to give notice of a year. But it does go for an initial period of three years and then it renews automatically for one-year periods unless terminated. And so, and then it says either party may terminate with or without cause by providing written notice at least 12 months prior. And so it's an initial three-year and then it continues automatically one year at a time. And so if there is a change, we at least have 12 months to figure out, okay, how are we going to manage fire? From the point of an either party terminating.
So we are locked in for three years then?
Yes, but we can terminate with 12 months prior written notice.
Locked in for two.
So, so really we're locked in for one year if we sign it today and terminate it tomorrow.
So at least two years, basically.
So I, I think the intention is that it would go longer, um, but.
Well, I would hope it would. I just don't want it, I just don't want the terms to all of a sudden, we get used to something that, that is, is good. And then it just, the terms drastically change.
I think both parties are highly motivated to maintain the relationship. Because I think from, well, and Boyd can speak to the county's perspective of the added benefits. But I, I also think that the Road and Fire District from WPR wants the county's ISO rating rather than starting from scratch with their own district.
Correct.
I've got a couple of questions. So in the, in the packet, it says, you know, um, so with the interim, when I think of interim, I think it's temporary. So is there a new station going on, being built up in Wasatch Peaks? Or is this the one down, I mean, I know we were talking right there about the storage units.
Right, but the plan is to stand a new station in three years.
Where is this new station? Right there, okay. And then the other thing is in this, in that same paragraph says, in order to support its rapidly growing community, well, Wasatch Peaks knew. That it was gonna grow quickly, that they were gonna build and now they're saying, well. They knew it was gonna grow, but yet now they want us to come and help because it is rapidly growing. So is this, I'm trying to figure out what their plan is or was or, because my understanding is in their development agreement that they were gonna have their own fire district. Are we gonna have to change the development agreement now if we're gonna accept this? Does that change?
No, but I, I think it is important to bring that up because at the beginning, they wanted to be completely independent. At least the development agreement stage from my perspective, I wasn't there in the negotiation necessarily, but the development agreement is very unambiguous in saying that. It will be its own and it will be separate. And so that's why in the recitals, um, Janet, so Janet. You know, took the first stab at it and then we kind of wordsmithed it at the end, but it does say that the county is responsible for providing. Emergency medical services, right, to the residents, businesses, properties located within Morgan County, Utah, including that area, right? Because they don't have their own EMS station. Same thing with the Mountain Green Fire Protection District. We're still responsible for EMS there. And then we said, and is responsible for fire protection services throughout Morgan County, including in WPR, RFD and Mountain Green. As outlined in respective interlocal agreements. It's only the interlocal agreement that binds the county in any way to the WPR Road and Fire District. The development agreement is very specific in saying this is not part of the county. We'll have our own. Now, we have that interlocal agreement because it benefits both of us. That's what the interlocals tend to do is we can share government resources. Well, and they're quasi-governmental with their district and so it's their district, not the LLC that has, um, that, that we have that interlocal with. This is just going beyond that to say, adding to our inner, inner local agreement, we as a county would like to have more. Resources available to both parties. It's kind of that same idea of having a, a countywide district where you're pooling those resources. And, and I think that that's why, um. It, it would, like some would argue that the county is getting more of a benefit, at least the financial aspect of it. But I think that the WPR residents are getting the, the financial benefit with the ISO as well. So it's, it's kind of that win-win where, you know, for, for a certain, for a smaller amount, the, the percentages that Boyd will go over. It, it's still beneficial to both, to both sides. But they are still responsible under their development agreement. That doesn't change here.
Previous meeting, I came across and asked me where it was, I was like, I, I'm very, I think it's a great thing. I think it can be beneficial absolutely to the county and the residents, especially those who are being dropped over in Enterprise. I think we need to make sure that the word gets out of why we're doing, because there's those people that look at Wasatch Peaks and like. They said they were going to do this and would have nothing and, and I want to make sure that we are iterating properly. iterating properly. Why? Some of the benefits. Again, they want our ISO rating, and we want a fire station over there to help our residents, so.
I think to be clear, they are doing exactly what they said in that they did stand up a district. That district exists, and this agreement is with that district. It's not with WPR as the, as the developer of the contract.
That's right.
It's with the district, and instead of the district saying, hey, we're just gonna create our own thing and stay up here and leave you guys alone. They're saying, why don't we partner? And let's help each other out.
And I think that's kind of what I'm trying to say is that so that the residents, they understand what is going on. That it's not, we'll see Wasatch Peaks as reneeding, and that's, I want to make sure that we're, we're getting that heard about.
Right.
And I think it's a huge benefit to the county. And so kind of back to the interim fire station. So as, if, if we were to do this, are they, when would this construction of, is it happening now? As far as building the new building, or what's?
Ed, do you wanna speak?
Alright, so Ed Schultz, I'm the trustee of the Wasatch Peaks Road and Fire District. Um, and happy to answer any questions. The, the plan was, and in the agreement is that we'd stand up the permanent station adjacent to the temporary station where the old car wash is down in Peterson. When we have a hundred completed homes, just by then, our, our Road and Fire District taxes will be at a point to help pay for that, you know, pay for that infrastructure that we, that the whole community would get to enjoy. The community being WPR, Peterson, and, and Morgan. And, you know, for a little, for a little history and color, a lot of this was Boyd's idea. We came in and when we were looking at standing up our own district, we've never stood up a fire district. And so we looked at third-party resources and we're like, well, we have this great relationship with Morgan Fire and Boyd through our interlocal and our responding to, uh, wildland fires. We're like, Boyd, could you help us just in some, some fact-checking on what budgets are gonna be, what we need, assumptions we need to be, we need to, um, put into our plan. And that's when Boyd shared with us some ideas about the greater district challenges in Peterson. And so I guess we've been at this maybe a year or so, and, um, it was a great idea. Obviously, the ISO is a benefit, huge benefit to WPR. Also, if we put a station where the original plan was up near our construction gatehouse, that's about four miles from, from Morgan Valley Drive, twenty-five mile and outer roads, significant amount of construction traffic, you know, it increases the response time down to Peterson because we have an obligation to respond in Peterson and the county. And then we looked at it, you know, today we have five part-time residents or five completed homes. Ninety-five percent of our calls are gonna be in Mountain Green or in the greater Morgan area. We've had calls for wildland fire, which was always stood up at the beginning until we had completed residence. Now we have to have our own, you know, next level of fire station. And so as we started talking with Boyd, it really came into a great win-win of Peterson and helping the greater community, and of course, helping WPR, which we have a fiduciary responsibility for. Um, and speaking just to the insurance of what you guys were talking about earlier, two of our employees that live in Peterson, one of their insurance was canceled, the other one went up seventy-one percent at renewal. And so it's the same thing, and that's just a small sampling of, of our employees that work in Peterson. And so we're hoping this would help, you know, those, those two gentlemen as well as just the greater community as, and then obviously WPR as well.
I have a question, Ed. And by the way, thank you for this agreement and for thinking about it, and it's brilliant. My question is, for long-term, does Wasatch Peaks eventually wanna make it its own fire district?
It is its own fire district.
But like, get rid of the county and just service the Wasatch Peaks area?
We've never even thought about that. That's really some of the original, the first time I've heard about standing up a countywide district and how that would work together with the two districts. Right now, like Mountain Green, it's not really double taxation because you pay for Mountain Green Fire District. Our residents pay for WPR Road and Fire District, but then their taxes go to the general fund. And so that's how the budget is allocated for, for fire and EMS here. So, you know, I think that's a bigger conversation, and we'd have to talk about what a countywide district would look like and how, how the districts together would work together, because I think, you know, we're, it's just, it's complicated. We stood this up at the Lieutenant Governor's Office. It's part of our Road and Fire District. It, it manages road maintenance as well, as well as, um, landslide mitigation, which in those environments we have some of, and so it, the district has multiple responsibilities with, because you can have three components with any limited improvement district. So we have our Road and Fire District that then also carries landslide. Then we have a utility district that has our, um, wa- has our water and our sewer inter, or sewer agreement with the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. So it's very complex. We'd need to spend some time thinking about that in play. Something that we haven't even thought about yet.
Right, right. I was just thinking if the county gets used to this fabulous service, and then all of a sudden Wasatch Peaks, which I don't think you'd do this because you're great to the county, but decides, okay, we wanna be on our own.
You know, I mean, I think from a use standpoint, I don't know on the district, but on a use standpoint, I think that even at maturity, when we have all of our homes completed or residents up there, there's still a significant greater population in the Peterson, Mountain Green areas that we're responsible to, um, to also respond to. So, you know, and a, and an investment in a permanent station would be a significant investment down in Peterson. I think something like the, what you're talking about for the Croydon, uh, uh, a satellite office especially, or satellite building, especially for the wildland fire apparatus is something we would really like to have up on property. And that we've worked with Boyd in distributing before we had any infrastructure, but we had two F-550 brush trucks, uh, a big deuce and a half water tender and a ranger, uh, with tanks and hoses on there with Boyd's, with discussion with Boyd's, our fi- Wildland Fire Group, we keep those distributed throughout WPR so that like our trail crew has all been trained up through the Morgan Fire for the, to hit their wildland, um, certifications. So we distribute the equipment out there because we are truly in the wildland urban interface, and with the construction going on, fire is now probably what I consider our biggest risk to the project. And so, you know, A, heck, keeping that equipment up there through the summer season out of the sun or keeping it distributed would be something that I think we would advocate for. But structure equipment should be down where it can respond to, to both communities.
Thank you.
I think that was great. Thanks, Ed. I, I just think, you know, that in terms like, well, where's the fire station going? So did, say it's gonna go right there by, I mean.
That car wash, I think would be a great.
That's a perfect place to.
We would take down.
Take down.
Yeah. Yeah. And then put, put in some meeting spaces as well. We've had inquiries from Peterson Pipeline, Peterson Irrigation, just some Peterson, some community space is that, you know, potential for a meeting area, you know. Boyd is gonna be making pancakes on Saturdays, so.
The, the only other thing I had is so, as I was reading through, I think you guys, Wasatch Peaks Fire District Staffing, is it Wednesday through Sunday or Saturday?
Y- yes. I mean, in the original agreement, I think we're, we're, we're trading copies of that right now, but yes. Yeah, I think there was a.
How would we, because the, I didn't, in the packet, it didn't have the exhibits, and so I was.
Because the, I needed you to pass this before we could do the lease.
So passed to the mountain.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So as far as staffing, like, what's our plan to staff it the other days or times, or is it? How's that? Thanks, Ed.
So right after, s- s- we just, we just need to get started. Uh, so we're gonna try to staff that station, um, so, five days a week, just like we do with this one, with people there all the time. We don't have enough volunteers in that area to take care of any, anything else. So while it's, while they're there, it'll be open. And on those days that they're not there, that station will be closed until we can eventually get enough staffing and enough funding to staff it twenty-four seven.
We're not, if we do this, it's not like, okay, now we gotta go hire four more firefighters and some EMTs to staff it. We would just go with what's being staffed right now and then.
Correct.
Uh, I'm gonna amend that, like, yes, but we're, that's part of the agreement. Is that's what they're paying for, is our additional staffing time.
Okay.
I just wanna say that I really appreciate the collaboration that's gone on to, to get to this point. I know it takes a lot of time and effort. There's been a lot of work done behind the scenes just to, to try to figure out how something like this would work. So just appreciate all your efforts in doing that.
Yeah, we're really just trying to protect the public straight up.
So I'll make a motion. I motion, um, that Morgan County entered into an interlocal agreement with WPR Road and Fire District. But to say for staffing or?
So it's, and maybe just amended to say a fire station facilities and service agreement. It, it supports the interlocal, but this is specific to the facility.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blocker, a second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor? Aye.
Aye, but the second was by Commissioner Fackrell.
Oh. Fackrell.
It's alright, we're on opposite ends here.
Katie got it. Okay.
All in favor?
Oh, aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Chair, I did also wanna say thanks to Ed. He sent us some proprietary data for, from the road district about their, um, cost of expense for roads, so that when we get, um, into Lieutenant Governor's Office about another area in the district, we have that data.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, we are on F-five. Joe Garfield.
Joe, welcome back.
Joe. So, um, two hangers, um, are potentially gonna get sold. So we're just asking for those assumptions of those leases. Pete?
So what, what's going on?
So I, I think it's kind of a confusing process, and hopefully we can solidify that. I know we've talked about how there's this process out there, and usually the process comes to us after the hangar's been sold, and it would be nice to follow our lease and, and get it processed. When I'm looking at the packet at these, it looks like the leases that were attached as assignments are leases that were made as of this year. And so even though it's from 2025, they're using a 2020 lease rather than the 2024 lease, which is the latest revised version that we've done as a commission. And so if there's not a lease that pre-exists, the assumption, I guess I, I don't see where the lease between Shirley Wilkinson exists that would be assigned to the new owners. It's a new lease that's an outdated lease being signed by the new owners. So that's where I have some confusion looking at it, and I would, yeah, so, um, maybe whoever's in control of the screen, if you can go down to the attachment to this assignment and assumption. So this is for hangar A1. And, and then we have exhibit A, and this lease was entered into March tenth of this year for A1. See it.
Yep, that's. If you guys don't wanna assume, do the assumption, then that's what I, that's what I.
Well, then we'd need at least the exhibit of the original lease to do the assignment or assumption. If we don't have the original lease, we can't assign or assume it. If we're doing a new lease, then let's do the one that we revised September third, 2024, which is the, the latest lease. Even this 2021 is done before we did our, our major revision in December of 21, right? Does that make sense what I'm saying? And so it might just be that they need to fill out the new lease. Do we have copies of the old lease that could be assigned? Okay, well, I know that some, I, I think part of the problem too, just for the commission's benefit, is, um, I believe that the owner or, or the, I guess the, what was that?
Late owner?
The late owner. I would say the prior lessee is now deceased, and so what was that? No. No, Shirley's not on the lease, and so she's trying to assign it, but she's not a party to the lease. And so I think, I think it's cleaner if they just do a new lease and the commission's okay with doing it under the current lease.
I would agree.
So then we avoid the, what was that?
So if you were to word that, or would you word it as?
So what I would say, maybe what I ought to do is.
I just ask a question before we get into a motion. So I'm assuming that Sure- Shirley came to you, Joe, and said, Joe, do you have some people on your list for these two hangers? No? So where did Shirley find these people? Okay, so, and so I'm, I guess I'm confused. I thought we, you were concerned about people owning more than one hangar. Are they, are they taking over two hangers or one?
I think there's two that I saw in the packet, A1 and K1.
That's what I thought.
Joe, can you talk on the mic? We're not picking you up. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Um, yes.
So this didn't go through you again, I guess, is what? This, this whole process didn't go through you again?
Yes.
It did go through you? Okay.
This went through me. Shirley, um, wants to sell those two hangers. She has, she's old, right? She doesn't want them anymore.
Okay.
So Paul Smith and Louis Bjork.
So why are they both on this, both, both on both hangers? Why isn't one buying one hangar and one buying the other hangar?
They're buying, both of them are buying both.
Except that in the other one, it's only just Paul.
One's really small, isn't it?
They're both, what question do you want answered?
I just ask, I'm just asking, why do we have two people on two, two hangers? Why are they buying them jointly on both hangers?
I think that's what they want to do.
Okay, so I have a question on that same subject. Is you've got a list of everybody that wants a hangar, yet they're buying two of them. Two existing hangers, two existing hangers. So wouldn't it be fairer? One, one for the other? I don't know.
No, because it's, uh, it's a free market. Once they own it, they can sell it to like your house.
Okay, so then I have the other question with that. Is what happened to this being a Morgan County airport? So that means people that live in Morgan County, why don't they get a priority over some of these?
It goes back to the free market.
But we're, we're supporting it. We're allowing it to be built for nothing. I mean, not built, but to be.
You cannot.
I don't know that would be illegal.
You cannot. You.
Well, you can have that in our rules.
Um. Try to.
I don't know that we can pass a law for it, but we can, it, the lease is a contract, and so if you put a term in the lease that says, I, I mean, our laws say that you have to be a resident to be on the planning commission, for example.
Right.
Or to be on the airport advisory board. Um, to own property in the county, you don't necessarily have to be a resident.
But we're giving them such a great rate as a resident of the county, maybe we ought to have two different rates.
Well, I think that that would go into your lease.
Four years ago.
Yeah, it'd go back to the lease itself, right? And so if, if in the lease, we would have to just revise it as of May sixth, 2025, rather than using prior versions. But I think that's something that the commission would have to determine.
I, I see where, where Blaine's going. It's like, and I look at it kind of the same way. It's like, we have this list of people that maybe live in Morgan. It's like, is there a way to maybe encourage sales to, hey, I have this one for, for sale. This is what I want, whatever. Go down the list, and if they all, you know, kind of maybe give them first right of refusal to people. Does that make sense? I, not that you can't buy it, but maybe give these people the first option. You know, that they live here, they're wanting to have a hangar. Is that something that would be, especially if you can't sell it outside the county, but give people that are here, give them first right of refusal. Like, obviously, this is something we could do in the future and wouldn't affect this, but for future sales or deaths or whatnot.
My recommendation is that if you're going to do anything like that, it would be in the lease itself. And if you want to carve out that there, I, I don't think that we could blanketly say you have to give first right of refusal, but if there was a double rate for an outside, you know, maybe that impacts the sale price, and then the market works itself out based on
And that's, and I.
Non versus resident. The non versus resident.
And I think that's just the idea is to try to get these people that have been waiting that would like to have a hangar like they never hear about it, you know, kind of. That's what a lot of things happens. Like you never you never even know it happened. Next thing you know, it's like, well, I never even heard. I would have been happy to pay whatever. I never heard about it. Just to give people an opportunity to hear, you know, like, hey, we'd encourage you. No, I'm not saying that we have to, but we'd encourage you to see the airport manager and see if any of these people that he knows are waiting for hangers would be interested in your hangar before you throw it out to everybody. I just think that'd be.
Especially when we're giving them such a good rate.
So I I think I'll correct myself really quick. Because I'm thinking out loud here, but now I'm thinking of like an equal protection type claim, you know, I I think that the county generally has a duty to treat everyone the same. Are we subsidizing residents? I guess that would be the question. It kind of goes back to our impact fees or our rental agreements. If if we can show that Kent Smith Park actually is seventy five an hour, that's the cost to rent that out and to maintain it, then we can charge that. And if we choose to charge residents twenty five, we at least have a basis for charging a non-resident the higher amount because it's tied to the use. And so I think it would be a more detailed discussion than we can have here. And I don't want to get us into like a fourteenth amendment type issue just because I'm thinking out loud. But we may want to look at that a little bit deeper.
And I and I think on on this specific lease, I mean, it's kind of where it is, but I think in the future, we kind of maybe have that conversation on future leases and sales.
Sounds like they're happening without anybody.
Yeah, we don't even know about it.
Well, and and we don't know about it till after the fact. And so, you know, maybe being you know, at at some points in my day, if I'm in an impatient mood, I think, well, let's terminate the lease. And then the county can you know, lease it to whoever they want. And we don't go through that assignment and and assumption if they're doing it before they get prior written consent, which is required by section four of the lease. You know, sometimes I just get impatient with people that want us to do all their work for them or come to us after the fact when we're abiding by the agreement and they're not. So but that's up to the commission because I'm not going to make that determination. I just would say if the commission's on board with people asking for forgiveness after the fact, then we continue to do that. If not, then let's get a good policy or practice in place, you know, that can be managed where it's it all comes here before they've signed these documents. Like.
I would like to see the airport advisory board to discuss this. But not accept these until after you because.
No, these are already in place. I don't think we can deny them.
I think there's.
I think we.
How how are you gonna limit somebody that wants to buy a piece of property?
Well, I think that that would be if they haven't met the terms of the lease, then you can limit them until they meet the terms of the lease. That would be my legal argument is. That that's part of what I'm saying is maybe I'm in an impatient mood right now and I'm sick of people violating our leases. And so my recommendation isn't an impatient recommendation based upon continual disregard for the lease itself. So and I can acknowledge that maybe that's where I'm at, but but they don't have a right or an entitlement to do certain things unless they follow the terms of the lease. And that's what I get impatient about.
And that's what I was kind of getting to.
Okay.
Garrett's saying, so in other words, they've done something that was against the lease.
You don't know that yet.
Well, the inheritance talks about it.
Have they cashed the check?
I don't know that. And so so that's what I'm saying is I think we need further study on it before we make a decision.
We at least need the the current lease for the assignment or assumption or the new lease if it's a new lease. That that's my recommendation. I have a copy of the new lease that I can share the screen with.
Copy of the old lease too?
I don't I don't have a copy of the old lease. I'm just saying that the lease they use, the twenty twenty version is not the current version that's been adopted by the county.
And personally feel like you need the new lease. But secondly, I'd love you to look through the old lease and make sure everything was followed like it should be. I I I can't imagine that lease thirty forty years old. The original. No, it's. That one is that one well, since bought up? Yeah, and then just a few years ago, when Wayne passed away, we re redone the leases in Shirley's name. Wow, so a couple of years ago.
Oh, so I guess whatever the Shirley ones.
Wrong Shirley.
Yeah, so if we have a current one in Shirley's name, then I think that that one can be assigned.
Yeah.
But it's not in the packet. It's we've got the new leases in the packet using the old form.
Assuming that this would be easy or we were preparing for the signatures. So maybe we should just get the council's approval to do the signatures. Later.
I'd say the the other way. Bring the leases in and then let's.
That doesn't make sense if you're gonna.
Well, he's got to look up the old leases to find out. Find out whether or not this is the exact.
Did she sign it in like which lease did she sign? If you said two, three years ago, it wouldn't be the twenty twenty lease that's on the screen.
It would be that one. I just want to do it legally right. That's all I want. And I'm fine with what I'm fine with them. I don't have a problem with that. I'm not trying to say reneg. I just think we need to
Right.
Do it correctly.
Well, and the reason that we have the new lease too, and and we may want to talk about that as a commission, but there was this idea that we want all the leases to be coming to come to expiration around the same time. And if we keep on doing a thirty year lease every year, then it we will be stacked was revised September third, twenty twenty four. It says that Lessey agrees to the lease, the to lease the premises for a term of twenty seven years. Because we were trying to get it on that same timeline. And so if someone comes in, okay, now you're gonna have you know, this year would be twenty six years with a thirty year extension, twenty five years with. And I understand that from someone who's building a hangar, that's different, but now they're all built out. So I don't think we have that same issue. And then we all are on the same lease rate. We're still we're all on the same lease cycle. That's what I would like to see.
I'm good with that.
For our county to manage it, because when I talk to Penny, there's missing leases. And I mean, it is kind of a mess and it does take more time than I would like to spend on this issue. Is if we just had everyone on the same lease with the same lease rate with the same terms.
One lease missing.
Oh, that's awesome. So we're doing good. Which is a good thing. So.
Good job.
And and that's a credit to Joe that's going after Penny kind of finds which ones are missing.
Right.
Joe's tracking that down, which is very helpful too.
So the lease, I remember it says that a new lease will be rego or or a new lease can be negotiated. So maybe that's what you ought to do in this particular.
So are we just looking for a postponement here?
Um, or or I would say in a if if you're okay with a new lease, then I'd say an approval on the new lease, not on the twenty twenty lease. It would be the September third, twenty twenty four lease, or I can revise it right now and change it from twenty seven to twenty six years and make it the May sixth, twenty twenty five lease. If you'd like me to do that, I can do that just right now.
A question I have going for you is fifteen cents a square foot. That has not been raised with the cost of living.
It needs to be at the current rate, whatever the current rate is.
Well, so.
They're saying fifteen cents in this current this lease agreement.
Well, yeah, so it wouldn't be this one. I thought I shared my screen. Is it not showing up for you?
Now, any further leases should be at the current rate.
Because we've got one person that's paying twenty four cents square foot and others paying fifteen. I don't think they've kept up with the.
Yes, they all have been kept up.
But that's on the commercial side.
But he's got it on the other ones also. So why not fairness in the whole thing?
It's these commercial. Phase two.
Yeah, the phase two is the the other side. Jeremy, is it still not sharing the screen? Anyway, I guess I'll just read it, but what it says is.
It's way lower price, period.
An an annual base rent equal to sixteen cents, the twenty twenty one rate for leaseable square foot of the premises adjusted annually for inflation by increasing the base rent three percent. Compounded annually, the three percent annual adjustment will commence out of January first, twenty twenty two. And so it's just taking it back. That it's gonna be the same rate as all of the other leases.
So are we collecting the increase three percent every single year plus?
Yeah, I think we're. Yes, I don't know what the number is now, but it goes up.
It's sixteen point something cents.
You're saying a three percent on sixteen cents or?
It's three percent on six hangers plus busters and it's two percent on the rest of the hangar.
Those are the older leases. Wait, say on six hangers? Six hangers? No, there's gotta be more than that. It's whoever participated in the infrastructure fee. Yeah, so it's whatever did the new lease as of December twenty twenty one.
You can look up my.
I think we're beyond the scope.
Well, the only the only thing is is like, I mean, I understand that, but it's gonna go back to the same question I had tw- in twenty twenty one. And that is the cost is too low. I know, Joe, you don't want to pay anymore, but when you're only paying a hundred dollars.
But Blaine, that that's really not part of this conversation.
I know, I I've accepted that. But what I'm saying is we've got new leases and and in it, it talks about a rate and that rate is not the current rate. And that's all I'm saying is is if we're gonna do a new lease, it needs to be the current rate, not the past rate.
I think you're missing it.
I may be missing it. Sorry.
Any new leases are gonna be at the current rate, whatever that rate is.
Okay, so why doesn't it state it in the lease?
What's that?
Why doesn't it state in the lease itself?
Garrett just tried to explain it to you. So yes, we we're all.
So I think the only way we we renegotiate the lease for everyone is only on new new leases, because everyone else is already into that thirty or just under thirty year lease rate.
So we need to do a new lease. That's what our vote was.
Yeah.
Well, that was our that was our motion, right? That was what we.
So, yes, yeah, I think the recommended motion would be if we change this to revise May sixth, twenty twenty five. We change this to twenty six years, so it's on the same timeline as the other leases. And then just acknowledge that we're using that base rent from twenty twenty one increased as starting January first, twenty twenty two. If we do all of that, then it'll be on the same trajectory as the other leases, the same rate and the same timeline.
Okay.
If we ever chose to move the airport, I know we talked about that, or if there was another place. I don't know if that'll ever happen, but at least it puts everyone on that same lease cycle.
Okay, Blaine.
Was that? And and that's fine too. I will, hopefully. That's that's my plan. Um, and and also Blaine, it's got the C P I, right? So every five year period you can use that C P I.
That's right.
To change.
Okay, I'm gonna try to make this motion with all your big words.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not doing the assumption. So I move to approve a new lease as of May sixth, twenty twenty five, based on twenty six years. Moving forward for these.
For the initial term.
For the initial term.
And I think if you just say for A one and.
A one.
K one.
For hangers A one and K one specifically.
And the names on the lease. Paul Smith and Louis Bjork.
Paul Smith and Louis Bjork.
Yes.
Paul Smith and Louis, what's his name?
Bjork.
Bjork.
All second.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Blocker.
That was a terrible motion.
A painful motion by. And a second by Commissioner Nickerson. No, I'm thankful. It was painful for you.
So it's not it's not gonna be an assumption of the current.
It's a new lease.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I appreciate you doing that. Okay, Josh, Jeremy, whomever has been assigned. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to the County Commission. Action item F six is the Wasatch Peaks Ranch subdivision, phase six preliminary plat. Uh, is that is application number twenty four point zero eight zero. The applicant being the Wasatch Peaks Ranch LLC, who is also the owner of the property and who is present in the audience tonight, Mr. Chair. The project location is approximately five zero eight six west Wasatch Peaks Road. Identified by the parcel numbers and serial numbers located in your meeting packet tonight with the current zoning being a resort special district with an applicable development. The acreage affected by uh tonight's proposal is two hundred and nine two zero acres. Uh, hundred and forty seven like two zero acres of that is is being parceled off for future phase. The acreage being affected with the creation of new lots with this preliminary plat, Mr. Chair, is sixty one point eight zero acres. Shorter context, the Wasatch Peaks Ranch Development Agreement was approved in October thirtieth of twenty nineteen. And from that development agreement was a conceptual development plan of which feeds down into concept plan number two, which outlines seventy five lots. And that was approved by uh this body in August twenty fourth of twenty twenty three. Of which we're drawing a request of a for a subdivision and preliminary plot approval of fifty two lots. Set to. The Morgan County staff has has conducted a review of this item and has found that it meets all of our minimum code requirements for accomplishing a preliminary plat. Uh, the review consisting of the county engineer, the fire department, necessary utility districts and uh planning staff. Uh, again, all finding that this meets the minimum code requirements and recommending approval to this body tonight. The planning commission held a meeting on this item during their regularly scheduled agenda for April ten of this year. There were no comments made during the public comment portion of the meeting. The discussion from that body was minimal. The commission voted to recommend approval of the application with a vote of five to zero with uh the newly appointed Chair Maloney not voting and Member Murray, who's um member at that time absent being absent from that meeting. Otherwise, uh, the staff is happy to answer questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, questions for staff?
I have a question for you. The black area. Mister. That's the the proposed road. Is that correct?
Yes, there are, I think, three rights of way proposed for this. The names of those contained in your meeting packet, those being Aspen Trail Road, Blue Stem Road, and Bridge.
Okay, so my next question is, is you've got those gray areas. Are those considered something different?
Yeah, um, I believe those are uh either wetland areas or uh hazard uh geologic hazard areas that need to be. Oh, those are ski runs. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. Those are the ski runs.
So that means that some of those houses are lots like B thirty nine. B thirty nine and B thirty eight and B fourteen are not gonna be on a road.
Typically, those properties would probably be served through easements, um cross access across other properties.
And is this part of the original or whatever you guys are basing on your the development agreement currently? Okay.
Yeah, this this falls in line with the development agreement, uh, the different phases.
So is this one already been taken out since it was in the? Taken out of green belt or is that?
Uh, I don't think it gets taken out of green belt until it's recordation. Yeah, and it's, it won't record until after filing.
I was just curious if that was part of the four hundred and eighty three acres that you did a year or two or three years ago. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're not that generous. Any other ones?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that uh, we approved WPR phase six preliminary plat, application number twenty four point zero eight zero. Along for a fifty two lot subdivision of land located approximately fifty eighty six west Wasatch Peaks Road. In unincorporated Morton County, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated May sixth, twenty twenty.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You gotta read that one.
I know, I cheated.
Yeah, you do.
It was really good. It just came right off the tongue.
Okay, Jeremy?
Chair, action item F seven is the concept plan code text amendment. Um, this is a request to amend the Morgan County Code to remove the requirement for concept plans from our code. In the subdivision approval process, the proposed amendment eliminates the concept plan as a mandatory, mandatory step before preliminary plat review. And application submittal, aiming to streamline the process of approval and reduce redundancy while maintaining compliance with the applicable code standards. So for context, last November, a work session was held with this body. Uh, that consisted of, well, of course, the commission and staff being the county engineer and the zoning administrator. Where the subdivision approval process was discussed. And the topic was actually streamlining our subdivision process and general improvements to the code. So at that meeting, um, it filtered down to concept plans and, and staff was, was tasked with preparing a draft of a text amendment. That specifically aimed to remove the concept plan requirement. Staff conducted a review that, that ended up taking the form of a draft code text amendment. With uh, the result being a complete deletion of uh, most of the mentions of concept plan in our code. There were a couple of concept plan mentions in our code that weren't related to subdivision, to our subdivision ordinance. For instance, concept plan made its, or is, references to concept plans are found in the site plan ordinance and the town center zone. As well as development agreements, things like that. So those were renamed to conceptual development plans. And you can see that in the text of the draft text amendment. Um, but again, within the subdivision ordinance, the concept plans were, were removed. But the references to them and, and the text around it, uh, clarified, uh, clarifying language across the code and, and a mention towards Senate Bill one seventy four from last year that was adopted by this county. Um, reflecting the change of the removal of concept plan and the subdivision process starting at the preliminary plat. Application. Uh, again, this uh, streamlines the subdivision process and aims to review, uh, reduce review time. Um, especially since the, the first time that all of the reviewers jump on for the review process is preliminary plat, and so it gets everyone on the same page quicker. Staff is happy to answer any other questions, but the code text amendment is contained within your meeting packet.
Questions for staff?
I have one question, Jeremy. It's under temporary land use C. Two. Um, Morgan County hereby designates the planning director to review and approve final subdivision application. So that's just application, not like plan or anything, right?
Yeah, it's for the pre-application process, so if they wanna sit down with me prior to submitting a full application and make sure they've got everything lined out. Um, they can do that. Uh, the temporary land use, though, um, this was adopted uh, prior to us re-uh, adopting the full SB one seventy four. And this section should ultimately be deleted out, but I need to make sure, um, we, we um, advertise that properly. Can't do that tonight. But um, the temporary land use should be deleted out because we've already adopted the full SB one seventy four last year.
Mr. Chair.
And it does expire upon a hundred and eighty days. Technically, so it, it should be taken out anyway. Because it, it runs its course. We had a, the, the termination date in the code itself.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to mention for the record that uh, that I should speak to the planning commission and their, their summary. From that meeting is that they met on April ten. And there were no comments made during the public hearing portion of that meeting. Uh, there was some discussion about adding conceptual development plan to the summary, or to the definition section of our code. Um, in some discussion, it was, it was agreed upon that the language of the conceptual development plan was plain and can be relied on the ordinary meaning of the, of those words. And so there's no recommendation from that body to include a definition tonight. Um, the, the planning commission voted to recommend approval to this body with a five to zero vote, similarly, uh, Chairman Maloney not voting and Member Murray.
Eric, you had a chance to go through everything, okay?
Yes, Janet, I think, did a lot of the drafting, too, just finding where in our code it was referencing different things and. Or no?
No, I did the complete draft.
Okay, so Josh did this one. I know she looked at it as.
Yeah, I, I did provide it to the attorneys to review.
Okay, I'll look for a motion for public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I move that we have, we accept the code plan or the concept plan code. Oh, this is a public hearing. Okay, I move that we go on to public hearing. Thank you. Sir, we're all about that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Fackrell. And a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and speak to this matter, now is your time. Okay, seeing we have no one, and I'm looking for a motion.
Move to go out of sec, out of public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to you, Kate. I know you attend those meetings, so.
We need to make a motion on this.
Oh, sorry.
Now, now we can go back.
Now you.
I don't have authority to make a motion.
I move that we accept the concept plan code text amendment. Has written.
Okay, I have a uh, motion by Commissioner Fackrell. And that's sorry, that's second by Commissioner Blocker, Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Think I was on drugs tonight.
Put this here.
There you go.
You better point that pin so they can remember you. I move that we have a recess.
Oh. And we're only on number eight.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
I move that we have a recess.
Okay. We'll take a five minute recess then.
Jeremy, I got the screen up if you wanna swap over. Are you doing that eventually, though?
This is a starting. Sorry. I know, it should have never taken. When her mom passed away, she said, I'm taking. I'm not scared of.
And I know, same with me in Italy. Because you can go the wrong way and they take.
And you can only go as fast as you want in like circle park.
Or you're parked in the wrong spot and they take it again. There a Pepsi in there? I'm just, my water, I drink more water. I don't know why I started eating chips. Pepsi would be really good with these. The blame buggy?
Has he made it to the restaurant? Oh, it's right there.
Olivia?
Somebody stole the checks.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started now. So this is F eight is what I was talking about, Kate, on on the fairgrounds stuff.
So, um, because F eight, he is wanting to buy two water fountains out of the Fairgrounds Capital Improvement Fund that will require a budget adjustment because we didn't budget to spend any money out of capital improvement fund. Um, they're pricing at eight sixty nine.
Hold it. It says out of Fairgrounds Capital Improvement Fund.
Correct.
But we didn't budget anything for that?
I thought we did.
Uh, your budget was on your screen. Fairgrounds Improvement, you budgeted zero.
Wonder where some of these go.
So we went from eighty to, to zero? Wow, we missed that, didn't we?
And that's the fair fund or the fair ground?
Fairground Improvement Fund.
Okay, cuz this is fair fund.
This is the fair fund. So where, what line do you want it out of?
Fairground Improvements.
I see it there.
I mean, cuz you have fair line items in ten, but they're not.
It says current year budget of eighty thousand dollars. Is that last year's?
Yep.
Yeah. I don't know how we missed that, but that's a big miss.
That is a big miss.
Do you want me to put a different amount besides the amount for two water bottles in there?
Well, we can have.
Well, it looks to me like, yeah, the, the, if we move forward with the electrical upgrades on the fairgrounds after the.
That's coming out of, I that's not coming out of this.
That wouldn't.
I will show you. It's in the next. Do you want me to just jump to that real quick?
Yeah.
Okay. So that one, um, so the electrical improvements, you guys uh, did a hundred and forty six, six sixty seven, eighty seven out of ARPA. And then you have, I put it right here. You have a hundred and nine that you've budgeted for um, impact fee fund balance. And then you have a fund balance in impact fee for regional parks of three seven nine, three forty. So you have a total of six thirty five, zero zero eight to spend. So you wouldn't need to pull it from
Anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
You've got some monies.
Okay, so Leslie, would you, where we totally missed that line item in our budget process, would you rather us put a little bit of money in there for capital improvements and not have to come back every time, or would you rather us come back every time? Capital improvements they're gonna do?
Not to my knowledge, except for the electrical, but we've already designated the funding.
So.
Okay.
My question.
Then that's.
My question is, is why don't we take it out of impact funds versus the ARPA? Because I thought ARPA was a last minute thing that we set aside last September.
I will show you, um, because we've discussed it eighteen times and that's what you guys decided.
So let's, let's stay focused on to, tonight you might get me rattled and I'll get off on tasks. So let's stay on task here and let's approve the first item that would, that would come out of, would be a budget adjustment.
Yep.
And that total amount would be?
Seventeen thirty eight.
So why are we going with this?
That's what Brett sent me.
Do you have a fountain that you?
If you give me a budget. I'll second it. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Okay, we rent four hundred chairs a year for the fairgrounds and it costs us, I think a dollar twenty five a chair plus three hundred dollar, yep, here it is. Current rental rate is a dollar twenty five per chair plus three hundred dollar delivery. We borrow forty from the oh, big grief, fire department. The question is, do we want to go ahead and purchase some? This is, I got these three estimates. They, this is, this Amazon one is the one that he sent, he being Commissioner Newton. Our concern with that is it only has a three hundred pound weight limit. And we have some corn finished people in our county. So I'm interested to see if you guys, this would come out of just the fairgrounds fund. So he was thinking maybe a hundred this year?
Hundred what?
A hundred chairs and like we just, yeah. And so then we'd only rent three hundred and the next year we'll buy a hundred and unless you guys want to go Yep. We, it'll go in the
We have illegal storage containers.
We have illegal storage containers.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Did you rent these chairs out to members of the community? Did I'm sorry? Can you rent these chairs out to members of the We haven't in the past, but that's not saying we couldn't start.
People are renting the fairgrounds and they need chairs or tables. We just had that. I mean, if you rent the Mountain America Expo Center.
How many do we rent a year?
Four hundred.
Oh, yeah. Then we ought to buy a hundred a year.
Great. Do you have a bender?
I mean, uh, oh, that's lifetime, huh? Wow.
Yeah, we didn't see the lifetime one, so we don't know exactly which ones they've got. It's not in our packet.
The lifetime one?
Yeah, lifetime was not in it. We only had the other three.
Are they the normal?
Oh, that's because they, all they did was send me an email. That lifetime ones are the ones the, the fire department has. They
Or they like?
Yeah.
Are those thicker ones?
They're the thick ones. They're a five hundred pound weight limit. So the lifetime and the event stable are both five hundred pound weight limits. And these amounts include the shipping.
I think so too. They're local from China.
Yeah.
Okay, so a hundred from lifetime?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'll put it, just to note that it is the, our intent in the budget is to buy another couple hundred a year or a hundred a year. Lifetime.
You surely put us on a, if we put something in our budget next year on that line item?
It already was. It's just, so Trudy that was here earlier, she didn't spend all the, usually the fair chair will spend down their revenues from the year, but by the time she got the estimate, our budget year was done. So she would have spent this last year on the chairs, but didn't get the opportunity. So so a hundred Need a motion on this or not? Nope, I have my estimates. I just wanted to see if you guys wanted to spend ten thousand dollars or three thousand dollars.
So we don't have to have a motion on this?
Because it's under my six thousand limit.
Oh, okay.
And it's not coming out of capital improvement.
Okay.
Okay. Garrett, you're up.
There we go. So this is a lease that we've been discussing for quite some time, but this one I think we've been able to pin down the last few items. So as you go through, I have I left in the highlights that I brought up at our last meeting, just so you can know what we discussed last time. The blue highlight is places in our code that I will update and I'll give those to you as we go through. And then the blue underlines are, are just the red line in the discussion that we had with Buster four nine line. I think if we, yeah, so we just update the date at the top under section one, there is a new exhibit A. And I'm not sure who's in control, but if they, okay, if you go down at the end of the document, it has the exhibit A.
At the end of the document itself?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, the, the lease and then you'll have to so this will look somewhat familiar. It's changed a little bit since the last time based on some recommendations from our airport manager and myself in our discussions with Buster. But now you see that they have the, the different hangar lettering where you've got a JJ one, KK one and so on. You'll also see that in the last one, there was a like a, basically an area where the three middle hangers would have to have their own agreement, maintenance agreement. So rather than doing that, and if you have questions, we can maybe let Joe speak to it. But the idea was that it's a public airport and the airport is responsible for the snow removal, the surfacing and so forth. But typically not. We don't want any limited access to the public, if that makes sense. And if someone is maintaining their own surface, then that, that could limit some access. There could be disagreements with the hangar owners and things like that. And we do it for the rest of the airport. And so just to be consistent and treat everyone the same, we thought it would be a good thing to just have the, the county manage that. Joe also said that it qualifies for all the grants for resurfacing. And so it wouldn't be an added cost to the county except for the time for the snow removal. But this portion, I think Joe can probably talk about percentage wise, the time it would take to plow this versus the rest. It's generally limited area. And so, anyway, are there any questions on that? For Joe or for myself or Buster on that exhibit A?
Yeah, I just got a question if I can. On this part?
Okay, and so the back is, and actually Joe probably could tell you the, the definitions. I would say it's the portion that's not a taxiway that goes to the back of the building. The other is off the road. And so it'd be more the storefront, but if planes are coming in, they'd come from the back.
And then the gate there, I mean, the entrance in that, that's addition. Okay, so that's an additional entryway into the airport and you're gonna have that with a gate, correct? I was just curious what's, what it was for. And I mean, if we're gonna put a gate on that, because eventually I'd like to have the airport gated.
Joe, if you can try and get in the
You guys need to hold that. No, just take it out of there and just hold it.
We're doing just
Like a rock star.
Yeah, just like that. And that way you can move around and show me
Okay, so entrance way here, no gate as of yet. We are planning on having new fencing and new gates eventually. Paid for by the state through a grant. So when that time comes and when it's appropriate, that's what we're planning on doing. But this this is planned for storefronts. So customers would come in, park here and access those.
Okay.
And then this would be your taxi, private taxiway and then the parallel, parallel taxiway runway.
Right. And so that, the question last time, and I know you were, anyway, I wanted to see what the agreement's been, is that KK one, LL one, MM one and ML, and N one, everybody was discussing, why not have this for B? I mean, the original agreement had it for the Forest Service and I agree with that. But there was some complaints about people wanting to why is he getting all of it versus them getting a, being able to put in a hangar? So
I think we already discussed that in the last meeting. We're moving forward with
The original?
With this plan right now.
As of right now. So do we have to have a conditional? No, because he's got a condition.
It's already in the lease. It'll have a conditional use permit for each one of those hangar.
Depends on what business it is. Yeah, and that gets into the changes we've made to the lease since then. I just wanted you to have a general idea of what we're talking about as we go through the text.
Okay, because if we're putting, I mean, these are all gonna be airport related businesses, correct?
Correct.
Related. Because other, if we're just putting in another store or another, you know, it's not airport related and it's not
Aviation related.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Under, I guess it's three G says, Lessey shall be responsible for installation of the hard surface shown in A. So I'm assuming that's
That's what we were just looking at. Well, it's the hard surface. So, and I think that we, let me see. But it says excluding the extension of the parallel taxiway. And so that's the part that is, well, now we're not at the other part anymore, but
Second taxi that hooks into the main taxi.
That's right. And so it's, it's more the, the county functioning. It's not specific to the businesses except to connect the airport together. And so, yeah, so this is, it's all of the hard surface in exhibit A, but for that parallel taxiway that is extended by the runway.
So I get, so I guess then it says county shall therefore have to be responsible for maintaining of the hard surface. So he'll, basically I'm looking at the parking lot. He'll put in the parking lot.
And the private taxiway behind the hangars.
But then we have to maintain the parking lot.
And
And the tech, private taxiway.
Or the airport, or your airport with our grants.
So is, so I know that the grants can cover, say, runways, taxiways, can grants take care of parking lots as well?
Hard surface.
So any hard surface grants can help maintain those surfaces.
All hard surface.
Okay. And will there be a match by us or?
I just didn't know it was limited.
Ten percent ninety, ninety percent.
I just wasn't sure if it was limited to, say, like runways, taxiways or parking lots, we can use that grant funds to maintain.
I think the terminology they use is hard sur, hard surface.
Okay.
So crack ceiling, seal coat. Stuff like that.
I just, I just wanted that all of a sudden the parking lot's gone to crap and no grants will cover it. And then we've got to put the bill to maintain that parking lot. That's, that was one of the things I was looking at, so.
Yeah, and, and this isn't something that was changed in the drawing, but one of the concerns that Joe had is that there was some snow storage in front of the, build, the middle buildings. And the way that it would melt and run would be down toward the, the nine line building, correct? Is that? And so, I think just having, just having the county maintain it. Now, the county can be in control of that hard surface because if the snow sits on the hard surface as well, it, it actually destroys it over time or it just breaks it down quicker. And so that was part of the discussion to say, well, if the county's gonna you know, if, if the county wants that accessible to the public, then we should maintain it as well. And allow the airport to remain public on both sides, the private and the, and the commercial.
So is the equipment that we have to take care of the airport, which is used for also public works in to do circles and stuff, is that adequate enough to do this? Or are we gonna have to buy and purchase more stuff?
We're gonna have to double our stuff. So give me another, another loader down there, would you?
I'm gonna give you a four wheeler. I want you to do with that.
Okay, so moved.
It's sixty thousand dollars.
Well, no, we have Wasn't the tractor cheaper than the plow equipment for the four wheeler? And you said, so you told me something?
That was my personal
That's your own personal tractor?
Yeah, that was my personal tractor.
That's fine.
So, yeah. So yes, we have the equipment at the airport and we also have Buster's got a little new TV. Few of us do, so, yeah. We're all in agreeance how to
We've got great equipment for sure.
We got great equipment. Thank you very much. Very appreciative of the loader and the bucket.
You did too.
Yeah.
Big old box pusher with a big old
That's what I was asking is, was that the one that we're gonna be using?
Oh, yes. Yes.
The one we've been using.
Yeah.
Because I seem to remember what it was called.
It does a great job.
Yeah, we bought a new loader and a big box pusher.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that first red line is just identifying. So there will actually be the five different leases. If that makes sense. So we'll have one for JJ one, KK one and so on. For all five, but what it's saying is as, you know, exhibit A as hangar and depicted by the red border surrounding the identified building. So that's gonna be the building footprint. And then here we crossed out private and put commercial. And then our our code has been updated since this was there. And so we'll just add that it's under section one fifty five dot two hundred through one fifty five dot two oh seven of our code. So that's what that blue highlight is. And so I'll just update the code there. Now, as far as I think Commissioner Fackrell, you were bringing up, you don't want this to be or, or no, maybe you didn't bring that up, but there is this question of, we don't want this to just be another extension of phase one and have the private aircraft storage. It should be commercial related. And so that's why we changed it from private to commercial. And then in section A, the only aircraft that's stored there is if it's essential for the commercial use. If that makes sense. And so it's, it's not gonna be like, okay, I run a business, but I also store my three aircraft here, which really cuts into the business I do. It's, it's your storing aircraft that's that's essential for the commercial use that you're using the building for. In subsection B, we took out storing private aircraft and then added a few commas, but said including but not limited to. And so the idea is it's commercial aviation related activities. That's what's gonna happen in all of these hangers. And it includes a lot of these things, but it's not limited to that. And so let's say, for example, there's a Lessey that wants to come in and do a certain activity that's not listed here. If it is commercial aviation related, then it's not excluded. It would just If that makes sense, so we'll have one for JJ one, KK one and so on, for all five, but what it's saying is as you know, exhibit A as hanger and depicted by the red border surrounding the identified building, so that's going to be the building footprint. Um, and then here we crossed out private and put commercial and then um, our our code has been updated since this was there, and so we'll just add um, that it's under section one fifty-five dot two hundred through one fifty-five dot two oh seven of our code. So that's what that blue highlight is, and so I'll just update the code there. Now, as far as I think Commissioner Fackroy, you were bringing up, you don't want this to be. Or no, maybe you didn't bring that up, but there is this question of, we don't want this to just be another extension of phase one and have the private aircraft storage. It should be commercial related, and so that's why we changed it from private to commercial. And then in section A, the only aircraft that's stored there is if it's essential for the commercial use. If that makes sense, and so it's, it's not going to be like, okay, I run a business, but I also store my three aircraft here, which really cuts into the business I do. It's, it's your storing aircraft that's, that's essential for the commercial use that you're using the building for. In subsection B, um. We took out storing private aircraft and then added a few commas, but said including but not limited to. And so the idea is it's commercial aviation related activities. That's what's going to happen in all of these hangars. And it includes a lot of these things, but it's not limited to that. And so let's say, for example, there's a lessee that wants to come in and do a certain activity that's not listed here. If it is commercial aviation related, then it's not excluded, it would just um, you know, it'd be at the approval of the county commission, basically. And then just so that there was no question, we made it abundantly clear again that lessee is restricted from storing aircraft in the hanger if such storage is not essential and ancillary to the commercial aviation related activity. And so I think we've said it enough there that no one can argue that they can store private aircraft.
So in other words, in J, not JJ one, but K, K through M and.
And N, yeah.
Can't.
They can't in any of these because.
Can't have any commer- I mean, you can put commercials, airplanes in there or jets or whatever, but you can't.
Essential to the business.
If they're gonna be in the approved air taxi and charter operation, pilot training or whatever, I mean, they gotta have a place for an aircraft.
Right, but it has to be related. To it's essential to the business. It can't just be.
But they can have them put in there if it's related to these businesses, correct?
For example, I think nine line does chartering too, and so they're.
And that's what I'm hoping for.
But it's part of their commercial business. If if Buster was putting a private plane in his nine line hanger, that's different because it's not essential and ancillary to the commercial activity.
Because that's what I was hoping for was charter service, which is what I know you do. Art, right? Charter.
So we're in the probably the last month with the FAA right now. It is a laborious process to get a charter certificate. Two and a half years in the making. It's right there, run the one yard line. So, yes, sir, that's coming. But as an example, we do have a very interested party in the avionics field that bountiful that wants to relocate his business, so he would have client aircraft getting avionics upgrades and modifications stored in the hang, his, if it were to play out in that business's hanger. You know, throughout the modification, then deliver them up to the customer when they're done. So that would be an example of airplanes being stored because he's working on them, upgrading avionics, and then they get kicked out when they're done.
But Buster, while you're standing, just a quick question, just looking at the, the uh here, it looks like there's, are there two tie downs on the east end? I see one.
Correct. That's what the civil engineers thought would be appropriate there, and I think that's good because if you're staging commercial aircraft. Let's say one is two or three days late coming out of avionics and I've got another one that's gonna be coming in, we got a place to put it.
So my, I guess my question is, is we're, we're getting lease on all the buildings. I see those two, so how are we regulating or charging or recouping costs on those tie downs? How's?
Recommendation only, but I know Joe kind of handles that. This would be, you know, we build the hard surface, give it over and then that.
So so those would fall under the county's preview to to make sure that we're charging, because I mean, if they're sitting there empty, but let's say you have this guy has a customer comes in, it's gonna be sitting there for three days. Somehow we notify the airport manager and he charges them three days worth of tie down rental. Is that?
Or we could, we could have set up an arrangement where the business, if we're storing airplanes temporarily for induction into the, into the hanger, we would just make that an invoiced item and then that business could pay the manager.
I just wanted to make, I just saw those there and wanted to make sure that we are recouping. Joe kind of peeked up there.
Just the, how, how do we, how do we charge for the tie downs that are depicted on appendix A?
So there's.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's what we're talking about.
We can manage it and then pay the county.
Whatever the lease rate would be. I just want, I just want to make sure that that's figured in there that we are recouping whatever.
That, that's a great question. Um, I hadn't thought that far into it, so I'd kind of defer to Joe how we can manage.
You're looking at it as basically the hard surfaces in, you're gonna turn the hard surface over to the county, which means those tie downs would come to the county.
Right, I would hope that we could somehow establish some priority for people who were bringing their planes in for commercial service, but um, it still would be county property.
Well, I, I think absolutely those, I mean, they're in phase two, they're for the use of those businesses. Commercial, not for private, but those are for the businesses to use as they're staging aircraft.
Right.
Um, again, I was just trying to, you know.
I think it's a great point. I hadn't gotten that far into it, but I'm certainly happy to work with the airport manager to flesh out how to make sure that county land is, is paid for.
Oh, thank you.
So if you ever, ever decide to get a, you're on and charter helicopters.
I've been in them, sir. They scare me. But we could maybe look at one of the hangars. We have two letters of intent to move in there, then the other ones I have plans for like the Arrow Club and Nine Line Annex and we talked about VRBO, so kind of notionally, all five of them have a purpose, but uh, and and we can make this happen right now uh, as our company financially, so we have room to play and maybe a helicopter company does.
The reason, the reason why I'm asking is because when the Olympics come. We may need that. Getting them to the different areas that they need to be as a potential. You know, I don't know if in your plans you could possibly get something that could be used for that when the time comes.
As, as it approaches, um, we could look at the land where we had the Forest Service heli- helipads projected. And we'd certainly approach the county at some later time and say, would you like us to put in helipads? Because it looks like the business case is there for it, for the Olympics.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, I'm just specifically the Olympics is all I was looking at and potentially other places in the county. It may be that we need it here instead of down in Ogden, because that's where they're all coming from now.
Right.
Is maybe we need it in Morgan County. I'm just looking futureist.
I'd love to work with the county on future projects like that.
Alright, I'm fine.
So one thing that Joe just brought up in, in that section one B. Um, he's indicating that uh, Brandt is moving forward with the FBO, and so he's requesting that that be stricken from the list. It wouldn't. So once again, it's just including but not limited to, and so if Brandt never moved forward, then there could be a request to bring it back. Do you have any issue with that Buster from your perspective? Any issue with?
I always.
Taking that out of the list or?
Flexibility is the key to air power I learned um, at the Air Force Academy, so that language, I'm fine with striking, now this does not lend itself all that well to an FBO. But if you're gonna try to force a square peg into a round hole and somebody really thought they could make a go of it with, you know, those two extra tie downs, or we look at other hard surface that we can install later and turn over to the county. At flexibility.
I would like to see it still stay in it.
Prevent it, it would just be another discussion with the commission. It wouldn't be a right or an entitlement.
I would, okay, I was just gonna say maybe not right, but just, I would like to actually see it stay just in case Brent doesn't get his.
Well, it's, it'd still be their brands.
Yeah, you don't want to have competing ones though.
So he could still do it, it just wouldn't be spelled out because it's and others as we find.
It would just be another discussion to say, is this part of?
Okay.
Alright, if we go down to um, section two of the lease, we, we struck the USFS in front of the hanger and then we struck the hard surface because that's gonna be um, owned and maintained by the county. And so yeah, right at that top of that section, thank you. I know that there was a discussion on the lease rate last time and I forwarded some information and it was also included in the packet that Buster sent to me about the Ogden to get comparables. And so I think that the question would be, do we leave it at the, uh, let's see. Well, I think that we would just leave it at the rate. Or at the twenty-four cents, or do we do it at the twenty-four cents that, since the first lease was signed now has been added with a three percent a year or something else, so that's a, so a discussion for the commission.
So is that, I mean, you started with the twenty-four cents and three years now or two and a half years. It's been had an annual three percent increase, so it's above that like thirty cents now, is that correct?
Twenty-six something or, or so, twenty-six something.
Because I was looking at today that if it's three percent, it would be two point seven cents every year, or at least the first year.
Two point seven.
That would be, that would be ten percent.
No, it's seventy-two cents.
Twenty-six point two.
I could have been.
Twenty-six point two cents.
No, I could have been figuring out something else. And if that's the case, Matt, what's your problem? You went to Morgan, I didn't.
And if you want to think about that, I can go through the rest and then you can come back if you think that's a discussion point. Well, the three percent will be there. It's just a question of, do you want from when it started, right? So it'd be the twenty-six point two. And then you add the three percent. I know that there were discussions about a different number. You didn't like the twenty-four or twenty-six.
Being starting at twenty-six? Other than Ogden's twenty-eight cents plus.
So we, this was, so two years ago, we were twenty-four cents, right?
Yeah.
So now we're at three percent per year over the last two years, we'd be at twenty-five cents, right?
Well, and then the new.
Considered we're the third year.
Oh, then third year.
I'll take the second year.
So then we do. That's what I'm saying, two years.
Yeah.
Did I do it my math right?
Yes, correct.
I just missed a year.
I, I have a tendency to shoot my.
Is everybody good with that?
Pretty.
So in other words, we're gonna go with whatever the current leasable square foot is at the current rate.
Twenty-six point two.
And I think you've already paid that for the year.
I do.
Right, um, it'll change because the building footprints are different, but that'll, that'll just come as we go. And I think we have something about prorating and all that as well, so I think that can be worked out pretty simply. Alright, so chapter seventeen is just title fifteen of the new, um, the new code. We have, yeah, so back to three, if you go down to so section, section three down there, chapter seventeen, I'll update that to title fifteen. And then what we put here is the all building construction major improvements must be completed within two years and six months from May first, twenty twenty-five. Um, they're ready to go, and so we're not really waiting on the Forest Service anymore, so that's the idea. Um, and then if construction hasn't been completed by that deadline, then it goes through. But we still have in there that we've worked with Buster and if he continues to exhibit good faith and that there's some delays that are outside of his control, we'll still have that same intention from the county to not unreasonably withhold extensions that that may be necessary, so. Alright, we, we did talk about three G earlier, just about the installation, but then we'll maintain it. Um, that excludes the extension of the parallel taxiway, and so I don't know the timeframe on that, but it'll just be in one of the upcoming grants that we would seek for that, correct, Joe?
So the next thing is because we're doing this with Buster, the taxiway needs to be extended to his portion. And then, and that'll have to be on the county. And while we're doing that, we just as well extend it as far as we can, you know, another twelve hundred feet or something like that.
To the west.
North.
Northwest.
The north, yeah. So that will be on the county side and not on Buster's side. He's not gonna extend the taxiway.
But as we said, there's grants available to do all of that stuff.
Yes, and back taxi.
Yeah.
And it sounds like there's kind of a pileup already, and so it does help the function of the airport or current issues with backing up to the, to the runway.
So, so to be aware of that expense to bring it from where it is currently to where it's proposed, right?
Okay. Alright, so then section four is the subletting. It talks about, so this one, it says, shall not assign this lease without, and then we said prior written approval. Um, the other one, when it was intended to be the Forest Service, we were saying, we understand that you're gonna sublease it in its entirety, so we had the uncommon provision there. But this was my best stab at trying to encapsulate the discussion of last meeting when we brought it for the commission. And it says, if Lessey elects to assign this lease, the county has the option to reno- renegotiate section two of the lease prior to approval of the assignment. And so that is, if you go to section two, that's the, the rent, basically. So you've got the you've got the leasable square foot, and so that's where um, maybe it's a discussion of if there's some business that is gonna have more damage to the hard surface, maybe there is an increase in, in rent for, for that space. Or if they're bringing in something that's toxic or, or there's something going on, we have that ability to renegotiate. I think that was the idea that, you know, working with Buster and some of the values added with doing the RFP, which allowed us to get a new lease rate with the Forest Service, uh, we're not bound to that beyond um, i- if Buster does assign the lease in its entirety. Um, and then here it says, prior to assignee conducting any commercial activity on the premises, the county will require the assignee to obtain the necessary conditional use permit and any other land use approvals through the Planning and Development Department. And the reason for that would just be the nine line is specifically approved under the CUP for what they do, but everyone, depending on what they're doing, will have to go through that same process. And so it's i- it, there may be a little bit of a lag time, or they're gonna start going through that before they even, you know, finalize assigning the lease. Did I, did I catch everything there? Was there anything else? As I'm reading it, I think it kind of encapsulates our discussion.
That's my, I don't have any gaps.
Okay. Any thoughts or questions on that, or are you okay with how it's written?
So just a quick one is, so is there anything in there? So like, we have somebody comes in. You hear about this in business where people, well, I need the write off, I need to do this, I'm gonna create a business. So somebody's like, well, I want a hanger and I'm gonna put my stuff in there, so I'm gonna create this business that allows me to get that hanger and I can lease it, but my that's kind of like a check on are they legitimate businesses? Are they really doing what there's, is there, is that part of this where conditional use permit that we're verifying that they are a legitimate business? Not just somebody has a lot of money that can create a business and say it is, and then they stuff their own private airplanes and say, oh yeah, this is my business.
So if they stuff their private airplanes in there, then they're gonna be in violation of the lease, at least at the beginning, that says it can't be for private aircraft storage.
So there, so that's kind of that. I just want to make sure that we don't have somebody that, and I'm not saying there is, but just comes in and says, I'm gonna go get my business, I'm gonna start this business up and say it's an air taxi or whatever you want to call it. But they're really, and maybe his planes are in the business, but he never does any business. Does that, does that make sense?
It does make sense and I, and I, I guess this is how, how the county, hopefully, you know, I can be bamboozled, some.
No, and I'm not.
Somebody, a seller or a buyer could come to me and say, I want to do this, but then I'm like, oh, that looks pretty good. I said, well, we gotta, we gotta work with the county on this and this is a chance for the county to flesh that out. I mean, I'll do my own homework, but.
No, and I'm not saying that anybody, I'm just saying. I mean, worst case, I mean, I, I think you're gonna, you want to do a good job and keep a legitimate businesses. I'm just thinking outside, like, you know, people say they are something, you know, they say, oh, I'm a contractor and I can do this for you. Next thing you know, Dopples come in saying you're working outside your scope and the homeowner had no idea that this guy really wasn't a contractor. They, in the aviation world, I, I'm, I know, I've talked to you a little bit, I know about enough to be dangerous. And so it's like, is that, is that a legitimate concern or not really? I guess is what I'm, what I'm getting at.
I would, if any business could, or person could misrepresent themselves, I suppose, so um, that's why I gladly went along with Garrett's suggestion on this because I look at it as, well, first off, I live here. I gladly went along with Garrett's suggestion on this because I look at it as, well, first off, I live here and nine lines, you know, something we built proudly here, but I look at it as we've got wingmen now. If there's, there's checks and balances to make sure we flesh out a, a potential bad actor. I mean, they, they could misrepresent themselves.
I mean, I, I guess thinking about it, I mean, this is just coming to my mind is thinking about, I mean, as you're there, I mean, you're running your business, you're going to get, you're going to know pretty quickly if they're really doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, you know, as I've thought more through it and talked about.
Yeah. And, and I, we do have, um, I think we have it in subsection two, if I remember. County reserves the right with at least twenty-four hour notice prior, prior notice to lessy to enter upon the premises. Right? So, so there is an ability
where we can go in.
Where we can go in and just see what's going on. I think through this CUP process, you also, you're kind of getting too op- too, uh, yeah, two options to that because you do it from the land use side and then you do it from the contractual side. And then I was going to point out in subsection eight A, where it's talking about termination. It says if either party shall neglect or fail to perform any of the inherent terms or covenants after having received thirty days written notice thereof, this lease may be terminated by either party. And, and so let's say that they are using it for non-commercial aviation use or they're using it to store their private hangars that's not an essential and ancillary use to the commercial use. Now we can just terminate the lease. It's entirety.
That's all I have.
I was just curious. We're doing it as a lease. What about rent basis? Can you do a, can you rent that facility out to someone to see, or is it going to be a lease all the time? When you're renting out a bit, at one of those buildings.
Like the VRBO, uh, the VRBO concept for, for pilots sleeping with their planes.
I'm just thinking of, okay, these other, other facilities you got to NN. KK. Through NN right now.
That's, that's probably a really good point too on the NN one is the, I would imagine the, it'd be great to have full understanding that I'm, I'm trying to build an arrow club, which would essentially be like a nonprofit for people, for community members. I too sympathize Morgan first to, to have a place if they don't have resources to do it on their own, to pool resources and have a arrow club there in NN one. And so Attorney Smith, I'm wondering, does that, how does that fit in with the commas?
Well, I, I think that since it wouldn't necessarily be a commercial related use or like a aviation related activity that's commercial because it's more nonprofit or club oriented, I think we probably need a separate lease for NN one.
Because quite frankly, I mean, from a business perspective, not NN one is not going to net a great profit to nine line. I, it's just, I, I just have a sense that that's what I want to do to give back, but it would have to be approved. It would have, I don't want it to violate the lease.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought of NN one. So I guess we can approve it through MM one and then brainstorm NN one and bring it back. But I think if we generally understand that NN one is going in that direction, it doesn't hold Buster back from doing the work and, and getting it going.
Plus it's part of nine line.
Right.
I mean, I'm just thinking.
Oh, that was, that, that got me thinking when you said NN one. I was like, are we painting ourselves in a corner with this?
Lease the whole building. If you're going to lease the whole, um, hangar, if Buster's going to lease the whole hangar, sublease to somebody else for aviation related business, then that, sure. If it was an arrow club or maybe the glider guy would want to put their airplane in there.
I was just thinking that in this, it always talks about you're going to lease it to someone else. They have to come here. Why not rent it for a period of time to that person and verify that they're going to do that business? That's what I was trying to bring in.
Well, I think. You're under sublease versus.
And that's what I was going to go to is section four, where it talks about subletting. Um, and so assigning the lease is, is assigning it over to someone else, but subletting, I think if we go to the end, um, beyond where the highlight is crossed out, it says the use of any hangar space by parties other than lessy is still subject to and required to comply with all the terms of this lease. And so, a- and, and then it says all sections of this lease must be complied with prior to the use of a hangar by the sublessy. And so if, if they need to have that CUP, then they would go through that. And, and if they just want to sublet it, it's not being assigned, then they can sublet it from Buster and maybe Buster after a time says, okay, we like what you add to the community. Let's go ahead and assign it. At that point, we have more knowledge as a commission to say, okay, they've been there for three years. These are their revenues. It looks like they're here to stay. And so that may impact the renegotiation of section two, if they come in for the assignment. Thought I had one more thought. Oh, but, but if they just say, we want to get it assigned to us initially, then that's also an option under the current lease. It just wouldn't be considered a sublet. It would be a full assignment that would go through that process.
I move that we accept the nine line commercial hangars as explained to us tonight, this lease agreement.
All second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Bakrol and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Hey.
Thanks Buster.
Thank you Buster. Um, and Joe, my.
Thanks, thanks for doing all that work on that lease. I know that's not easy.
Uh, my next thing is our environmental assessment, um, responses due May eighth. I just want to make sure that I'm encapsulating everything the commission wants annotated from the study. Um, but the number one comment I've heard is, um, an adverse position to closing the ninety-two exit. Um, wasn't sure if, and I have all the data analytics that I've received from both planning and zoning and, um, our fire and EMS department to support that in section three dash thirty-three, which is, uh, where they've listed the intent to close. Is there anything else you want me to add to that? Letter before I submit it.
Did you mention? Did you mention possibly just closing the off ramp and keeping the on ramp open?
I think that is, that was the position. Yeah. The commission, was there more concerned about closing the, um, the westbound on ramp and not as concerned about?
I can agree with it. I, I, I did have a conversation.
Yeah, the westbound on ramp.
Westbound on ramp, okay.
Yeah.
Eastbound.
Eastbound off ramp, don't care.
Anyway, I had a conversation with, um, Senator Curtis's representative for the northern region. And I told him our concerns about that exit entrance. Um, and asked him, number one, go back to Congress and see if they can change for rural areas, the distance between exits. That could help us out also within UDOT's perspective and to see if they can help us. Just so you're aware, I've done.
Definitely worth a try. Definitely worth a try.
Yeah, worth a try. If we can get Senator, and he's over infrastructure and that kind of stuff and transportation.
Well, if we look at the average of all of our exits, we're totally fine because you know what? Eight miles between Peterson and Morgan. We average it out, we're well over three miles.
And it's the, the emergency reasons as to why we need it. And if they're not, you know, at least allow us to be able to have something that can lift up a barrier and move it out of the way if we have to have an out in the county.
You got a wreck there by the tour, tour anywhere there, those people are stuck.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not getting out.
They're not getting out. And that's, that's why we, and it's emergency reasons. That's what I had a conversation with him about. And he said he would talk with Senator Curtis and see what he.
Is there anything else you want me to annotate in that letter?
I don't have anything.
Just to start, you know, yesterday.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, timeline.
Go start right away.
Yeah.
Are you good with that? Okay. So the next one, um, we have not had a interlocal agreement for, uh, between Weber Human Services for Morgan County Services for the senior center since two thousand and seven. Um, I met with them. It's been a hot minute. Somebody else?
Been a week, no. It's been about a, I don't know, it's been five or six weeks again.
Yeah, I feel like it's been a minute. So, um, this is the agreement, um, for services. We will also include, it, it essentially, um, negates my grumpiness about who can and cannot use the building, who has priority use. Um, but then also puts into contract the use this has gone through Garrett and, or Janet and Garrett. Garrett did add some, uh, last minute commas and, and redundancy removal. Um, I think there was three things that we changed on this one, but they were, um, they were minor. So looking for a motion to approve.
Not yet.
Okay.
I went through it also.
Okay.
In there, it does not state who owns the equipment inside.
It, it does.
Where?
Oh, in the building, in the equipment.
Within the building. So who owns it? They do or we do? Or is it part of the real estate?
We do.
Okay. It doesn't state it in there. That's why I'm wondering.
I don't know. I know, the only thing I know that's theirs for sure is their AED. There, if someone has a heart attack, AED.
That's theirs. I thought that was ours.
We have one in the library. They have their own.
Okay.
Um, we're talking about kitchen equipment.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm talking about kitchen equipment, pool table, the couches, the.
I mean, we paid for that stuff.
Well.
But the agreement, the use agreement specifically states that we have carte blanche on everything to include the equipment.
Okay. Then I have here that Weaver helps human services. We have no say in personnel costs. So.
Uh, that's not fact.
It says it right here. It says WHS will provide staffing promotion. This is section one, A one. Including managing all personnel costs associated with staffing such as salary benefits and workers' compensation. So my question is this. They're going to raise their people.
I don't see a one A or.
Hmm, don't be, we, they do have, we do have a say in it because we sit on the board.
And they're going to come before.
You both do?
We do.
And they're coming before the commission.
And they, they don't.
With a budget every year.
Now, they aren't, and they aren't really generous on their stuff.
Okay.
Pretty tight.
Okay. Um, that's good to know.
But we get a vote on it.
Okay. As long as you guys get to vote on, fine. And then it says shared use of the building for the Morgan Senior Center activities. It does not allow us to be able to use it according to this agreement for any other purposes except senior citizens.
Which article?
It is article three, B one, two, now. B one, basically. B one, facilities, shared use of the building for Morgan Senior Center activities. Morgan senior citizens. It doesn't say set citizens. It just says Morgan Senior Center activities. Which means we can't use it for anything else.
I disagree. And I disagree because that's section specifically, so section three or article three is entitled.
Right to buy them.
Article three services. So who has to provide what services? The services provided by WHS are as established below. What services we have to provide is in section B. And part of that is the space, the shared use of the space. That's what we have to provide is the shared keyword, shared use of the space for their activities.
Okay.
So it's not exclusive to just that.
So then.
I would have caught that and I would have been spicy.
Okay, like I am now. Okay. So then another thing is, is within this, and I can't exactly find, oh yeah, there it is in section, article three, section A one. It says which shall, okay, the Weaver County senior, senior citizens at the Morgan Sen- Senior Center are going to be there three days a week, minimum, three days a week. Which shall include but are not limited to social recreational health and educational activities targeting and so forth. The question I have is, Sissy, when I was talking with her at one time, she says that we have to go out and we have to purchase or have people give us something so that we can have a party. Or so that we can have some extra quilting, uh, quilting pins or needles or fabric or whatever it might be. Um, so why, if they're supposed to help and provide these activities for all senior citizens, why are then we having to go out and ask for donations to handle that? And just the second one that goes along with this is that once we do that, it also says that all donations have to go through Weaver Human Services. And that's not in this one. I'll, I'll get it for you here. Says in article four, allocation of donated revenues. WHS shall receive all donated revenues related to the programs conducted pursuant to the Older Americans Act, including but not limited to meal programs. So that means if I die and I want to give a donation to the Morgan Human Services, I have to make sure that my estate or my trust will take it down and put it in humans, Weaver Human Services instead of keeping it here in Morgan County.
All right. You want to, can I speak to why that's wrong?
Answer all of my questions.
Okay.
Until I get to the next one.
Okay. So the Older Americans Act of nineteen seventy-seven is specific to nutrition. All that federal funding has to co- comes to the state of Utah. Utah can only distribute that to an area, area on aging, which is what we use through here. And that is nutrition only. So yes, if someone makes a donation under the article nineteen seventy-seven Older Americans Act, it is specific to nutrition. So that's to answer the second part of your question. So yes, if they want to donate money for quilting, um, arts and aging, any of that, that can still come to Morgan County. But if it is donated under the premise of the nineteen seventy-seven Older Americans Act, yes, that is specific to nutrition. And that because they provide that nutrition and all that's cooked down in Weber, that makes total sense that it goes to WHS. On the first part of your question, which was, um, why are we not, why does, are we having to do that by donation? That will be discussed in item twelve. And to give you a brief overview, it's because there's already a shortfall of over eighty thousand dollars and how much it costs to feed our aging citizens. And we don't have any excess.
Their, yeah, their, their budget, that doesn't have a line item for extracurricular.
We are more than welcome to do that, but we already are doing that through our library programs and not through this. And I would much, and that keeps our control local.
And she has an endowment that she can.
And she doesn't have an endowment, correct?
Okay.
But how this is written for that donation part is specific to nutrition.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. Okay. So then. I had a question off of that question, but I'll go to my next question until I.
I'm happy to answer it. I know.
The insurance, the insurance.
Okay.
Has USIP agreed to the three million dollar per curbs?
We already have it.
So we already do. I thought it was only two.
Well, it's, it's actually more than three.
I think that that's on them. Can we scroll down to that?
I, I need.
Seems like I remember reading that and thinking, like, thinking that question, but it was what they have to provide.
No, it's ours.
No, it's ours. No, it's ours.
Where is it at?
Necessary for the operation in Morgan Senior Center, or you're talking about Article Five.
So Article Five is that they provide.
W H S.
So under insurance, it just says for the operation of the Morgan Senior Center, but under Article Five, it says.
It's under our county.
W H S.
It is, okay.
And maintain liability insurance at a minimum of three. Yeah, so, so us, we, the county at its own cost and expense will ensure the building, including fixtures against fire, with such additional coverage as the county may allow to procure. The specific number is not related to the county. It's W H S does the addition, additional at that amount.
That's the notes, like.
Any other questions?
Oh yeah, the other thing was, is right here, sorry, next one. Um, when I was in the discussion with them and you, and you and Matt, that amount, that eighty thousand, two hundred dollar amount was going forward from July first, because they weren't gonna ask for any of the back, they just wanted it for fiscal year.
Correct, that's action item twelve.
So why are we approving? But this is the agreement, this, okay, so that's the item twelve. Okay, so then that's the one for later.
Do you want me to address that question, Chair?
Might make it quicker first to get it approved.
Who's Chair?
Chair.
Oh, Chair. You can't.
Okay, um, in action item twelve, so the ask was due to the shortfall. We would have to do a budget adjustment for F Y twenty twenty-five, and that shortfall was eighty thousand, two hundred just for this year. And then when we get to F Y twenty twenty-six, we will have to budget appropriately, which would make it the full. Scroll, scroll, scroll. Two hundred and five, two oh two oh nine.
We don't, we don't have to do that one because of those other things, it was that eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight is what it is.
For this year.
This year was, this is shortfall only.
This is the shortfall only for F Y twenty-five.
And what I understood it when I was in that meeting, is every year ongoing, it would be eighty thousand, two hundred. Every year, because that two hundred and five is what the total cost is of the program. They receive grants from that, which cuts it down, there's fifty-two thousand, eighty-four thousand, anyway. There was a different amount that we have to come up with, and it's not, well, anyway, we can go through it for a future year on the, when we get budget season. That's what my understanding of it was, is that we would have the eighty thousand, two hundred for this year. That is basically for July to July of next year. Because they did not ask for any back.
Correct, but it's not from July to July, it's from July to December.
Okay, verify.
I, I will call, I'll call her.
Call her and ask.
Are we, okay.
Either way, we should approve it. Yeah, she is. She was in that meeting too, and that's what we asked her, I asked her that. Is that going forward, or is that what we owe them back?
I know they weren't, I know they weren't.
There was not.
They were not gonna go back, is what they said.
Retroaction.
Yeah, I, I wrote it down, but it's. You might be right, I don't know, but it's worth asking, it's eighty thousand dollars.
Well, even if it's July to July, I, which I don't.
Which would be basically. I don't know, just call and ask before we.
So do you want me to?
Yeah, let's postpone that one.
So we gotta go back and first, uh, do a decision on the order, the resolution.
Resolution C R twenty-five, twenty-three, an updated agreement for services with the human services and.
I move that we, uh, approve Resolution C R twenty-five dash twenty-three. Making sure that all the items, questions that were done are remote with Weaver Human Services and our senior citizen.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell, a second. Thanks, Commissioner Blocker.
I think he's doing it now.
Are there any opposed?
I have a motion on twelve to postpone. I moved to postpone item twelve.
I'll second that.
Did you just hear the motion and the second?
Yes.
We seconded it.
Who did it?
You did.
No. You made the motion.
She motioned it, I seconded it.
Did you?
Yeah.
So I had it backwards.
For twelve, not a letter.
I have a motion by Commissioner.
Blocker.
Blocker and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
That was the number twelve. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Uh, the next one is C R twenty-five, twenty-four. Um, this is an reappointment of three members to the Weaver Human Services Board for the terms listed.
I can just vouch for all three of these people, they're very active in, on the board, and they're, they attend every month, so. Whether by Zoom or in person, Clint's usually there by person, so is Julie. Good people.
I'll move that we approve Resolution C R twenty-five dash twenty-four, reappointing Robert Hunter, Julie Southwick, Clint Thurgood to Weaver Bieber Human Serv- Services Board.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries?
So Resolution C R twenty-five, twenty-five, um, the reason this isn't done through, um, the budget adjustment as normal is because you already approved these in the budget process. However, the auditor wants a resolution to actually move the funds. So these are, um, the fund balance, fund balances that you approved in the budget for F Y twenty twenty-five, and I'll show you where you did those. So the first one is to move monies out of the ramp fund balance of sixteen, four thousand, six fifty and into the recreation. So here's the two hundred thousand that you had designated out of, um, the fund balance of the ramp tax. And it makes up for two hundred thousand dollars of the three oh four oh three one into the recreation fund. The second is the additional one hundred and four thousand, oh thirty-one, that is coming from general fund balance and into the recreation. Here is one hundred and four, uh, one hundred and four oh thirty-one of the two oh four oh thirty-one that was appropriated for fun, out of fund balance, and makes up the additional one oh four oh thirty-one into the recreation fund. The last hundred thousand dollars was capital projects coming out of general fund balance. So there's that additional one hundred thousand dollars, the other one oh four oh thirty-one being rec and into the capital projects fund specifically for the uh, record, Recorder's Office and the Clerk's Office, um, updates to meet audit standards. Any questions for me on that resolution?
I move that we move that we accept the Resolution C R twenty-five dash twenty-five, transferring monies from fund balance to recreation. Thirty-two, capital projects forty-four, and moving the two hundred thousand from the ramp or ramp tax six, fund sixteen to the recreation. Thirty-two.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell. And a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I didn't even have to look at her.
Good job. Okay, the last one, um, as far as monies transferred, is that the recommendation of the Tourism Tax Advisory Board that we, uh, move a hundred, a thousand dollars out of the ten thousand dollar budgeted um, from the U O T co-op line into professional and technical. They made that motion at their meeting.
On the thirtieth.
On the thirtieth.
And now I have.
So they had ten thousand allocated for event marketing funding. Um, the line item was a total of one nineteen eight fifty. We're gonna move, their request is to move a thousand dollars from that into a professional and technical line to cover the costs of, um, the website domains and additional things like our, um, calendar add-on to the website itself, rather than it just being designated fully for event fund marketing. Your Commissioner, uh, question?
Yes, I do. If that was directed at me.
Yes, it was.
Um, okay, we, a year or so ago, went and said that we would, if it's within the funds included in the budget, that, and it's under five thousand dollars, we can transfer it within the funds.
Correct.
So why are we having to do it from the same fund to the fund within the same fund, thirty-five?
Because you are the designation, you are the authorizing board to request the transfer of those funds. They can make a recommendation, but there's no elected official or department head over this, except for the county commission. So you have to be the one to make the final decision. It's your budget.
So that means on all other departments, to us, move it from one fund to another fund.
So if.
If it's my budget, I'm the elected official and I'm one of one, and so I can make that call in my own budget. But since anyone here is only one of five, you need three of five to change it within your line items.
All right, I just want clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. You want to bond since you're over that?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the transfer of a thousand dollars from line thirty-five, four, forty-five, ten, three, ten, four hundred to thirty-five, forty-five, ten, three, ten, zero, zero. For major administrative costs, the county's tourism website.
Which was recommended by the.
Recommended forward by T Tab Board on four, three, twenty-five.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
My last item is, we had, um, Inner Mountain, maybe, I don't know if Commissioner Blocker wants to speak to this, but we had an email, um, from Inner Mountain Health that is wanting to do a community event, um, health needs assessment, um, with key community voices. Um, they were gonna schedule it for, I think, this Friday, and so there was just no way in heck that we could make that happen that quickly. They would still like to do so in the month of May, um, and just needed some dates. So this is my request for dates that you are available to do, so.
So who is the Inner Mountain Health Community?
Uh, it's someone that spoke to Commissioner Blocker at the Y C C Board. No, someone just sent me an email. She said it was nice to meet you at Y C C, that's why I'm getting it. Yeah, but hold on. Talked to me about this, so that's why I forwarded to you. What do you want to do with this? I can go back more.
I thought we all got that email, didn't we?
You did, I forwarded it, and then I didn't hear back, and I was like, well, she's not gonna have anyone at her event, so.
You know, Friday night at six o'clock is not the time I wanna go to a county meeting, I'll be honest with you. That's one of the few date nights that.
What, what is that? Uh, here we go. They just want people from all over the community to come and attend it?
That's a good question, cuz I was confused by what they were asking. It, it made it sound like it was, they said stakeholders, but I don't know who the stakeholders are.
It's the email, welcome again to Y C C, have a question unrelated, work for an amount of health, we are, would, will be inviting Morgan County Commissioners to our community, community input stakeholder meeting on Friday, February nine at five. This meeting is for the Inner Mountain Health Community Health Needs Assessment that we conduct every three years in collaboration with the Weaver Morgan Health Department. We would love to hear the voices of community regarding significant health needs. If there's a community center in Morgan, then I should reach out to reserve a place for this meeting, or is there anyone else? I should reach out to invite to this meeting. My response to her was, I can get you our Senior Center, I can get you our auditorium, but that date is, I mean, this was sent on April twenty-first. The only assessments I remember talking about at Y C C were, were, um, battered women and children, they're up and doing assessment. I don't remember talking about Inner Mountain. Right, and she did say it, she has a question unrelated, and Priscilla Martinez, um, does work for the Weaver Morgan Health Department as well. Um, so that's, I do know who she is, but that's about it.
I wonder why she wouldn't just come to our, our Weaver Morgan Health.
Maybe that's what we invited her to.
Other than if she wants to talk to other people besides us.
And she wants a lot of people from the community.
But you're not gonna get them there on Friday night, but.
They're not gonna be there on Friday night, but. It'd be sick. By the end of this week, yeah. Yeah, you are. I'll be tired. So. So do you want me to work with her to set up a time and date? Is there?
Now that we know what it's about.
It sounds like half of our commission's gonna be out of town in the next couple of weeks anyway, so.
It's a busy time of year.
Maybe I'll see what it is she's actually needing as far as data.
Let's ask her, and, and if she's wanting us to send out a notice or something, invite the whole community or.
That would be.
Just find out.
Okay.
And if it interests us, we'll let her know. If it, if it doesn't, I guess, I, I could have Weaver Human Services reach out to her and we invite her to our meeting.
Okay. So that was my last action item, unless anyone has any questions on that, and I can give you my updates. Okay, um, the big hot button topic right now is the, um, rifle range right now is a gun range, because the property behind it is being leased to lamb a thousand sheep. And so we can't shoot long-range rifles out there, so we have a temporary ban on firearms at our, uh, gun range. Um, and we have posted that on the website, and we do have postings um, on the waiver that they sign when they come into the Clerk's Office and signage on the Clerk's Office windows. Um, that, of course, re-triggered the conversation of moving the rifle range. I know two commissioners have sent me potentials places to do that, so if you have a place that you'd be interested in me looking into, uh, to move the rifle range, please forward that to me. I think our, the accountants were here, uh, not last week, but the week before, prepping us for our audit. Mike gave me one and Vaughn has given me one.
Did you?
I don't think I've talked about that one.
Vaughn, did you give him yours, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I have Vaughn's and Mike's.
Logan mentioned.
There's just been a lot of fires in the last weeks, um. So I, I don't, I couldn't even give you the Reader's Digest version at this point, I guess I'll just send it to you. But that's the big one that's, that needs to be said publicly, is that we are not accepting long-range rifles. We max it a hundred yards right now. So.
Anything that need to be done on this, or that's?
That's for, uh, Commissioner Fackrell's commissioner comment. Unless you want me to talk about it.
We can talk about it now.
Okay, so, um, we did go out for, I, I was unaware that it was posted, I did not write it. Um, we posted an R F P for the lease of the Fairgrounds property for ag use. We did have two bids, um, the R F P was written as a three-year. And and, yeah, we had two applicants. As far as I know and can find, there is no written contract, nor should there be, because it has not come before the commission for agreement. So Commissioner Fackrell has concerns.
Yes, I have concerns, and that is, is when, in our discussion in our work session, we talked about this, and we did not want to do for a three-year contract time. But it was a year-to-year contract, because if we can ever get our stuff together and get the right grants and everything else, we would be doing something with the fairgrounds. And that's part of the property that we've all. And that's part of the property that we've already discussed is going to be, is happening.
So who wrote the F O P?
Our F P was written by Brett Heiner. And it went to Brett Heiner, which is odd. It should go to the clerk's office, but again, I didn't even know it was posted.
They shouldn't have gone there.
How did he even get note? Where did he just do it on his own?
I guess you guys talked to him about it in a works, in the work session, so he he did it. I. It's literally still on my list of things to write that I've never written, so I wasn't even aware it was posted. I will tell you that we found out today that we did get at least one of the recreation grants. And that's the one out at the fairgrounds for the multi-use fields. We're still waiting to hear if we got the one for. Um. Oh, in coalition with the city. So.
That's great.
That's good. So anyways, that was my concerns.
I think we need to revise that.
Because I mean, it's.
Because we can't have them, can't just steal it back from them.
Yeah.
Well, it does say we have the right to cancel anytime for any reason.
Right, but if you've got a lease for three years, a three-year contract and we're going to tear it all up next year.
We have a right to cancel at any.
Anytime for any reason due to future.
Okay, and are they also aware that during a certain period of time, that we're going to be using a portion of that for the July fourth? Uh, regatta and the celebrations that happen and it's not within here.
Because he's the one that's rented it in the past, right?
Okay, and his is the low bid and I want the high bid.
But we we do need to make that clear.
Right. Yeah, and so, you know, for whatever we do, we can accept it as is. I don't want to state names because we shouldn't. Um. But until we're ready to accept it. But um.
And I can.
We ought to have a contract drawn up, though, that outlines exactly what it is before we accept.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then if they, in any contract, even under procurement, when it's below a certain amount, it still has to be approved by the commission. And so it's still come to a public meeting and we ought to. Just make sure they're okay with. The regatta cancelling at any time and and just make sure it's signed by both parties.
Yeah, and I'm I'm okay with that as long as we do that.
And we'll just pro-rate what they use.
That's right. Hmm, said annually.
They pay annually, I think.
Yeah, but it's. For the full season.
Gotcha.
And if we were to cancel it at any time, then we would reimburse the pro-rated.
Okay.
But they have to be aware that we would be using it on that day.
That is, that will be put in the contract language. And we'll put that um, that contract before the commission on the.
And I'm fine.
Okay.
That does kind of bring up a question to me about that piece of property, because we have spoken about starting to haul material in on that.
That's right.
On that that little piece.
It's it it's a separate piece, so it's the front side of the river adjacent to the road that is part of the lease. The backside is where we've started to haul some materials.
Never mind.
And that's actually.
Speaking of that, though. For this grant money that to build fields. Um. Know that Lydia had been pushing because she wanted to build those fields right next to the pickleball courts. I've told her I don't know how many times, that's not where we want to start. In fact, I don't think we want fields there at all, because that's got to be parking and other things. And so we want to do it behind the river there, between the river and the railroad tracks. It's a bigger area anyway. And actually Brett has started hauling some material in there already. I've seen some loads in there to, because we've got to bring that up. But I just want to make sure we're all in agreeance that that's the plan is to build the first fields back there. And we're going to build some multi-use fields that are big enough, they can do soccer or whatever they want to do on.
I don't think she's thrilled about that.
Well, I think just to speak, not for her, but. We, I know Katie and her and I both went and back and listened. Because we were still confused about which one we were building on and even after listening to the work session, we were confused on which one. So thank you very much for the clarification, because that helped me a lot.
I.
And what we're talking about is.
With her a handful of times.
But you're one of five.
I know.
Okay.
Well, then so had I.
And what Vaughn thought, Blaine thought, when we were listening to that meeting again, we were like. I'm even more confused than when we were in the meeting.
So we're all on the same page.
Talking about right here.
Yes, yep.
Okay, cool.
I was confused.
I'm still.
It's a much bigger area back there. It'll be way better for fields anyway than up here along the road. And I think it's less likely to get destroyed by some kid thinking they're going to go four-wheeling through it or do turns in it. You know, because we can put some ballards back there or some, something to keep people from driving onto them.
And we are going to start with it this year if we got the grant.
That's wonderful.
According to Brett as well, um, we did finally get the contractor that was awarded the Fairgrounds Trail to start making movement, so.
Okay, good.
That's awesome, too.
That's great.
Yeah.
Now we need to get some money to do the trail clear up. Around that field.
But that's, that's what we're trying to do by step by step.
Yeah, agree.
And part of that is in partnership with the golf course and some other entities that we're trying to work with. But yes, and then along with that, we want to try to eventually. Cross the river. There in probably that little one little spot, right?
Do you have anything to share?
Sure, um, I went to the UAC Legislative Conference this weekend with, or Management Conference with uh, Blaine. And a few items. Um, by December twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, our county should have implemented. Um, our privacy program and report. We did that in February. And also prepare for audits. We've already had our audit. And then I discussed with Kate. The the new T R T and the T R C C A tax. Uh, UAC's going to. Write a resolution and share it with all the counties. If we want to impose a point two-five tax for T R T, it has to be done by resolution by July first. So that would bring our our transient room tax rate from four point two-five to four point five.
That's correct. But then, along with that, it will also, the state on July first will also impose a tax. A sales tax for T R T that will bring it for to a total of five point two-five percent for T R T.
Do we get that extra?
Time we get the extra, we get some of the extra money.
Okay.
So we're going to have a point two-five that we have to impose and then. We get a portion of that other zip.
So when UAC sends.
When they send that, then we'll bring. But it all has to be done. We have to have it by resolution before.
July one.
July one, so that means it'd be the last week in June. Or the last meeting.
They also discussed H B two-three-seven, which discussed rollback taxes. Um. They made a good point. If we want. Say a landowner wants to conserve their land for grazing or agricultural protection area. The county can go in with these rollback taxes, which the state can also come in and help with funds. And purchase the property rights. I mean, the development rights and the property rights remain with the landowner. And um. Hmm, I verified it with.
But that's all right.
What do you, how did you interpret?
I interpreted, in fact, after reading it, but also this rollback tax, two thirty-seven is a rollback tax. And that tax goes into a special fund that can be used for open space. It doesn't necessarily have to be used to buy the development rights, because what they're doing.
You don't have to, you have to saying if you want conservation land.
But if they want to do a conservation easement and transfer development rights, then that means they can end up having. Those stay in perpetuity as agricultural. So I was thinking of some different landowners and I'll talk with certain individuals about that later. Uh, that could possibly preserve their land and never have it developed. And the state will pay for that. State and other entities will pay for those things. Um, but then the the transfer development rights. Basically goes under that conservation easement. Now, the opens, the the rollback taxes, though, can only be used for. Another open space piece of ground somewhere. Where it might be, and that's where when we start getting the rollback taxes and Kate's already gone to work on this one. And that rollback tax will be a special fund. Set aside and then we can do whatever we need to with that to preserve open space. There is some clarity. And I asked specifically for Raylene. Um, whether or not this can be done and that is to have a cemetery down in Mountain Green. They were going to check on that, see whether or not we could use some of that money to purchase some ground, to put a cemetery in. Or transfer it to somebody else, or however we have to do it, but there's a lot of workings to do in that. As far as whether or not it can be used for parks, that's another thing that they're working on. But it has to be used for open space or continue in the T D R. And so those are the things that can happen with that money. And of course, if we don't use it within ten years, it goes back.
It doesn't go back. It goes to the state.
Yeah, it goes to the state. Uh, L, La Ray. Yeah.
Is there, so the restrictions on the open space, they don't have that all, you know, like park cemeteries?
They don't have it as far as each individual item. Um, potential, and I asked him the question, okay, a cemetery is open space. You just happen to have. Caskets under the ground and uh, but it's open space, so that was a clarification they're going to work on. So go ahead.
Awesome, um, then Steve Waldrop talked about housing affordability. And they had a big presentation on America two fifty again. And um. Sheen that off kickoff date, July first, twenty twenty-six. What's in law amendment, anything else?
Couple others.
So you had asked, um. Brandy Grace, if she'd come present? Yes, can you, on which one? That's the housing? Yes.
Housing, that housing fund.
The housing plans, economic development, UAC, there's a housing funds called the UAC Housing Foundation. So Brandy um, is going to come present. To our commission. Educate us more on this uh, UAC Housing Foundation Fund.
Yeah. Hmm, they also addressed another item. Of course, the wildland urban. Fire thing that we're all going to have to take care of, which we've already talked about. Um, the other thing is, is there's now a new, I didn't catch the the item. And that is to, we do not have to, and which means we're going to have to change our rules, the commission. To where we do not have to have our location here in this spot. In other words, if we want to hold a public meeting, we have to still announce it and do all the public notice stuff. But if we wanted to have a meeting down in Mountain Green at the middle school, has our. Ability here, uh, we could do that if we so desire. That's basically what it was doing, that one law, and I don't have the number, again.
So was that a request to task staff to change?
Well, no, it's to us, so I'm not, I'm not asking, I just didn't say.
That's what I'm saying, is that a motion to make, request staff to change the commission policies and procedures.
I mean, if we want to do that. That's something we have to decide. I kind of like.
I I I don't see the need.
I don't either, but I'm just saying.
Set up all this gig giddy up.
But that's just something that is in the law now.
And that came about because some of them lived outside the.
And that was the reason. For us, I don't think we need to change it at this point.
And we do have that option. And we already have that option under the Open Meetings Act, but this is still the anchor location that we're always setting up here. It it doesn't preclude us from deviating, so.
Well, it just changed in the state law, is that you don't have to have this as the. And then H B five fifty-one. Is if we have any entity within the government, a substitute one. If we have any entity such as, and it's not called Morgan County. Has to be, we have to start listing it as a D B A for government entities. So in other words, if we have the Morgan County Library, Morgan County Fairgrounds, Morgan County. We probably don't have to do anything, but like down in Dixie, you know, down in Washington County, they have the Dixie Convention Center. They had to go and list that as one of our, their entities. As a D B A, so that was one of the laws that changed this year. I don't know if we have anything. I was trying to go through mine. I don't think we have anything, but everything we have is Morgan County, so you guys can.
They probably operate that as like enterprise.
Yeah, just like Morgan City's Morgan City Corporation, Cash County's Cash.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we we might want to look at that law.
Do we provide cancer screening for firefighters?
And another one was if we had Senator Colmoran Vickers that talked about H B five fifty-six. About energy. If we wanted to start getting into the energy business here in this county. With the small nuclear facilities. Which are about the size of twenty by ten. If we wanted to put them throughout the county, that's an option. Maybe even entities, private entities could do that. If any locations or. Anything that anybody wanted to do, so that was one item. It's interesting. And. Also, there's another one that was protection of the anger, ag grounds through easements cannot. If you have a conservation area. You have to stay away from that or you cannot develop within three hundred feet of that act. So in other words, if we put in a.
An A P A.
Yes.
You can't develop within three.
Yeah, three hundred feet of that agricultural area. And. Do we have a? County law enforcement plan?
In reference to emergency management and.
It says the coordination plan, the Sheriff's Office Coordination Plan with Law Enforcement. We just need to make sure we have a plan for that for the state.
Okay, what's it called?
Um, it's called the Coordination Plan with Law Enforcement. And I don't know, that's something that they were supposed to send out to us and I haven't. Okay, and within the T R T, it also under H B four fifty-six. That um, with those new. The new taxes, sales tax that goes into effect for all those T R T residents. For people to come to our county. Uh, some of that can now be used as long as we do records. And somebody is um. Those funds can be used for emergency management services. So in other words, if by chance there is a, like they do down at the sand dunes in Juve County. They're spending a lot of money on emergency management and getting nothing in return. If by chance we ended up with lots of tourism-related. Capes, uh, taggers, somebody gets hurt or something and they, anyway, those monies that go. We can use some of that money for taking care of that. It it's, but we don't have a big enough fund.
Well, emergency management is completely different than ambulatory.
Yes, but there's emergency management services that might be ambulatory enforcement.
I'll have to read.
Yeah, so anyway.
They also said seventy-eight million dollars. A year will be available for tourism grants starting spring of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. So that's a good thing.
Is that part of U O T? The U O T co-op or is that in addition to? That was the T R T.
T R T.
Okay, part of that, there are points of five tax.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I have on that part. It's not me. Nah, he's asleep.
So you, I can't cross your name off this yet?
If you'd like me to, I'll go to the next item that I have.
We'll just finish, yeah.
Okay. Alright. I attended a. I attended a trails conference in Canab. And there's another.
Blaine, can you turn in your receipts?
Not yet. Do you want them?
Yeah, you haven't turned in any this year.
Can't wait till the end of the year.
I don't plan on turning very many in.
With all these conferences, we were supposed to bring them before we knew we were gonna sand. So we don't go over budget.
I won't be over budget. I won't be. Probably spend less than I did last year.
Okay, will everybody please bring, they're gonna go to a conference, bring it to a meeting, just say, I'm going to conference. That's all I'm asking. Make that decision.
Policy says. The joint budget, it's not.
Correct.
Each of you don't have your own, so.
Kate and I met with Davey from Snow Basin and he, has anyone heard from the state about a state road off of Trappers going up to Strawberry and connecting around?
To Strawberry?
And I didn't get.
It'll be a new road. Know where those sweet ponds are?
Oh, you mean the strawberry side of.
Strawberry side.
Okay, you said strawberry and we were both thinking like the reservoir. No, I haven't heard anything about that. That's interesting.
Yeah, he was shocked that the county hasn't heard anything from the state.
So they're talking about connecting the trappers and then going over.
Connected to the base of Snow Basin. So it would be a loop, there'd be two accesses and and to, and his understanding was when they did their letter of agreement that they would be an Olympic site. It was with the understanding that they would help push that access road as a UDOT road. But I checked UDOT and I checked our RPO, like it, I checked, checked the regional transportation plan. It is nowhere on there. So I sent a bunch of emails when we were meeting and I've got no response.
They didn't say I haven't heard of it either, so.
Yeah, I know.
There's is another one, but I'll wait for another day. That's really follows.
We've got a long ways to go.
But there is a, some discussion being had by the Trails Active Transportation Advisory Board that they would like to somehow get back some of the vacated property or the trappers or trail. If that is feasible or not, Garrett, that's, so we'll have to discuss if it's even feasible, but they're working with that and they're not Morgan Valley Trails Foundation. Or our Morgan County, it's not us, but it's Morgan Valley Trails Foundation, which has basically taken over a majority of the trails. So that way it's not being on us because they can get more money than we can get. And so this helps out our valley as far as trails, recreational trails, because we as a county don't have at this moment, funds necessarily recreational trails. And in that meeting that I had with them, the Backcountry Horsemen of America would like to potentially come and, and talk with us about that. And also they want to be in on some discussions when we talk about the East Canyon property. There as far as putting in a big enough parking lot to be able to suffice for Backcountry Horsemen. It's a club and they also have money to give us to help us do it, which is nice too. And that we can use impact fees. Another individual. Anyway, there's more stuff in here that I'll be talking to Active Transportation. We need to also keep updating as we build trails. It's called PioneerTrailsSystem.com. And we need to try to update that as we get new trails. Nike, Nike, of course.
Commissioner Nick?
I don't have anything new. Well, I guess the only thing I'll mention is cycling cans are out to most of the county now. Oh, there's still, there's still some that they're yet to get to, but they'll start pickup on that after June 1st. So and to find out your pickup day, if you visit the county website, there's a map that'll show you.
I was gonna say, some people are already, they're fault and they got them out there.
Mostly old already.
That's all.
Commissioner Nick, for a second? I just have that need to go into a closed session. I can make it quick, but for the discussion of the character professional competence or physical mental health of an individual, I get somebody to make a motion on that.
I'll move to go to closed session to discuss character competency, physical mental health of an individual.
Second. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Renz and a second by Commissioner Nickson. Favor.
Aye.
Can you post? Okay, thank you.